My computer now says it's 6:00 PM, so we will begin the meeting. Good evening. I call this October 26th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated via Teams meeting. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page. On October 29th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville's social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. At this time, I'll ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of our council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I'll ask if there's a motion in a second to invoke Rule 19. If we could use the chat function for that, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to invoke Rule 19.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Steve Rao.
I second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. If Mr. Smith can please do a roll call on that motion.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
I am trying. Sometimes there's a delay with the unmuting.
Understood. Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 4 on our agenda, Discussion Items. There are three discussion items on tonight's agenda: a strategic plan overview, and FY 2021 update, a town council roundtable/brainstorming session, and a department presentation, FY 2020 report. I believe that Town Manager Paige might want to talk quickly about tonight, and then we'll pass it to Erin Hudson. Town Manager Paige?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to sort of set the stage for this evening's presentations, the first one you have will be from Erin Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager. She has approximately 15-20-minute presentation, then looking for really some guidance on how you might want to update, refresh, a whole variety of options, our strategic plan as we enter our third year of that. If you would allow her to get through her presentation, we've reserved most of the bulk of what should be about 45 minutes to an hour for you to give staff some direction for how we would do our work, so then we know when we would be bringing you this item back. I recommend a quick break at that point in time to allow department heads to get set with department presentations. The Department Presentations section of this agenda is the lengthy part of the agenda. I hope it's one you'll enjoy, though. This is something that we often get asked for, is updates from our departments and some opportunity to engage and hear more about the things that we do every day that perhaps you're not aware of. The departments worked hard on it. I'd like to give them a lot of credit for that. You'll see their style. But at 12 departments and limited time for each, we're going to be pushing both staff and council along to allow those presentations to occur. Your questions, comments are really important to us, and thank you to those of you that may have already sent us some questions. What we propose is offload those questions, be it tonight by email in the chat box. We're going to capture those and turn those around into FAQs for you, but to allow all of them to get through. If we could keep it really high level, it would be helpful. And I've asked both the mayor and the Mayor Protem to help with us trying to stick to some of that timeline. I also propose a break about halfway through that. And it is my understanding from some polling of council members that there are no roundtable items for discussion tonight. And if that is the case, we can skip Item 4B.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update and the clarification of what the night's going to look like, Town Manager Paige. At this time, I'd like to pass the Zoom or the meeting to Erin Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager, and she'll facilitate the first discussion. Ms. Hudson?
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So Martha is correct. Tonight, I'm going to be providing you all an overview of the Connect Morrisville strategic plan and some background information and current year update. I will be seeking some council direction on the review process to allow staff to more fully develop that and get it underway. As she said, my presentation is about 15 minutes or so. I will pause at a couple of intervals to take questions and make sure everybody is clarified and on the same page, also being mindful of the discussion topics that are before you this evening. So first, we'll start with taking a look at where we all began. Please let me know if you have issues with sound or anything like that as well. After more than a year of plan development and community engagement, the first ever strategic plan was adopted in Morrisville in April of 2018. Through input and engagement processes, we developed a robust plan, and that's outlined in the image on your right. Council identified five priority initiatives at their spring retreat in 2018. That was followed with four additional staff-identified initiatives. We saw alignment in very similar topic areas. And I'll remind you to consider initiatives as shorter-term project- or process-oriented items. We have goal teams established for each of our six planned goals. Staff representation is present on each of the six goal teams. And there are goal champions assigned to each of those goal teams to facilitate meetings and discussion. I must note the immense commitment by elected officials, the Morrisville community and staff, and the level of input and work that went to development and plan approval. That's the image that you see at your top left. Together, over 13 months, 27 meetings, and 128 hours, we developed Connect Morrisville. But of course, the work did not stop there. Connect Morrisville is a plan for everyone. It's meant to be guiding, visionary, strategic, collaborative, and engaging, both between departments and with our community. When employees begin a career in Morrisville, they are oriented to the organization and launch. The story of Connect Morrisville is part of that orientation. Each department has its own individual department plan where they establish performance measures and initiatives, demonstrating how daily work carries out the goals of our plan. Goal teams allow for focused efforts on the prioritized initiatives identified by staff and council. The five council priorities are noted on the screen, and four staff-identified priorities are in the focus areas of technology, transportation, and development. Very quickly, I want to give you a highlight of the council priority initiatives. 1A: Adopt and Implement a Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Through multiple months of review by staff, PZB, council, and strong public engagement, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan was adopted March of 2019. 1B: Enhance Public Transit and Transportation Options. Over nine months, the town engaged in a public transportation study about the future of public transit in Morrisville. Through public outreach events, joint PZB and council work sessions, the final report was approved in October 2019. 3C: Maximize the Use of Technology to Inform and Engage. Goal Team 3 compiled a catalog of communication outreach tools and shared with council in spring of 2019.
Erin, are you sharing the screen? Because I don't see the screen rolling for me.
No, this is still on this slide.
Okay.
Yep. Our CIO continually evaluates strategy and technology needs and presented a smart city plan in August of this year. 4B: Adopt Best Practices Through Obtaining and Maintaining Accredited Status and Evaluating National Accepted Staffing Levels to Meet Service Level Goals. Our Police Department was reaccredited in October, I apologize, in November of 2019 and is pursuing Gold Star reaccreditation in 2023. Our Fire Department aligned its departmental plan with our organizational plan, is revising its standard of cover in preparation for reaccreditation next year, and received Class 1 ISO rating in March of this year. And lastly, 6D: Work Collaboratively with Wake County Public School System to Ensure Morrisville's Public School Needs Are Met. Goal Team 6 developed the draft charter reviewed by council at its spring 2019 retreat, which was later adopted in February, and our Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee was formed. The committee has now been in place and meeting for one year, and staff continues to serve as a strong community partner for Wake County Public Schools. Our Performance Measures Advisory Committee received a realigned presentation style beginning in January 2019. Department presentations now focus on the most meaningful and impactful metrics to the community. Also starting in January 2019, each action item presented to town council, excepting minutes approval, contains plan-objective alignment. Those brief metrics have been tracked through the last meeting in September, and cumulatively, 113 action items have been counted. We demonstrate commitment, not only to the identified initiative areas of focus, but also to broader objectives. The chart you see before you showcases those objectives with alignment approximately 20% of the time, noting that all associated objectives are accounted for, but some of them do have multiple associations within some action items. So I want to call out just a few of those high points that you see. 2.2: Create a Sense of Place Through Insightful Development That Balances Commercial and Residential Growth. 2.5: Plan and Provide for Current and Future Infrastructure. This is our highest alignment at 26% and is known to be an element of high importance to staff, elected officials, and residents. 3.4: Provide Opportunities for Meaningful Public Engagement and Collaboration. 5.2: Deliver Customer-Focused Service. And 5.3: Require Highest Professional Standards, Both Critically Important for Staff. 5.5: Align Priorities with Resources. Over the last several fiscal cycles, Town Manager Paige has highlighted alignment of elements within the annual budget to the strategic plan, and this speaks to the overall work efforts of staff and council. Lastly, Morrisville Pro is our community dashboard, launched in fall of 2019, and helps to share our story in a more graphic depiction. So more to come on that. Now where we are headed. When approved in 2018 without a formal timeline assigned, originally, Connect Morrisville was envisioned as a three-year plan, so 2020 would be the start of our revision process. Staff has begun some of this work internally. We reinvigorated and expanded our goal teams, who already do a great job. We just provided them additional support. We expanded licensing for our plan-tracking software and provided additional training and enhanced individual department reporting responsibility. A little more on Morrisville Pro. That acronym stands for Track Projects, Report on Plan, and Organize Plan. As I stated, it's a community dashboard. It's a storytelling tool for our organization. It's meant to be graphic-heavy with limited text, not meant to be a duplicate source of information when a parent source exists, but of course, we do provide those links back and forth. It is mobile-friendly and typically limits to one-screen scroll depth where possible. Storytelling can sound elementary, but outside of a strategic plan itself, we want to be able to showcase how all components align in daily work to accomplish the elements of our plan. Staff has spent the last several weeks updating information in our tracking software, and our goal is to publish updated information to Morrisville Pro by October 30th. This tool is an excellent resource for our staff, community, and visitors, and we recognize that this information is outdated. We are working hard to bring it current and establish more defined internal processes for consistent maintenance moving forward. So now that everybody is up to speed on our current status, let me pause quickly for any questions before we move forward.
Recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson with a question, please?
Yes. Erin, thank you so much for all this work. I mean, it is very hard, I'm sure, to map everything, and we've made a lot of progress. Was there any, like, target percentage or priority of, you know, the goals that we set? I know that you showed us the chart of the mapping, but did we ever establish a target?
So I wouldn't say that there's a target for the goals specifically. Those were just the priority areas that we really focused on with our goal teams. So one of the things that I'll get to in the next couple of slides is that one of the things that our plan could have a little more strongly defined is alignment. And what I mean by that is if you look at Objective 1.1, Outcome Measure 1.1, Initiative 1.1, those do not align across the board. So if we were to look at one of the specific objectives or initiatives that council or staff has defined as a priority, we couldn't necessarily tie it to an outcome measure, which is really where we put our metric and data information. So that's one of the things we really want to focus on and improve in our next revised issue.
Right. And where I was going is that with that further refinement, we might see those percentages go up.
Certainly.
To show stronger, you know, priority levels than we do today. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao has a question?
Yeah, mine's a comment and a question. I'll try to combine them. So a lot of this plan has been great, and it's all great, and we just thank the staff for all the hard work. My question really has to do with, there's been so much that's happened in the last seven months since March with COVID-19, and, you know, just sort of, we don't know when it's going to end. We don't know its impact on, you know, education, economic development. What processes will there be in place for us to continue to have a dialogue with citizens about maybe changing expectations of this plan? Because all plans evolve and change. But I think that we've seen more change in the last seven months than probably decades, you know, just in terms of what we're dealing with.
So if I could ask you to maybe hold on to that question for our next couple of slides?
All right.
You might get at least part of that answer, or we could have a little more in-depth discussion about that as we talk a little more about the revision process and how we might further define that engagement. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to get it out there. Thank you. Sorry, I jumped a gun a little bit.
Yep, that's okay.
That's all the questions I see. Ms. Hudson, if you want to continue?
Great, thank you. So now, I would like to have a little bit of discussion and talk about how we're going to be able to move our plan forward together. And we have a number of options available that we can consider in a revision process. There are opportunities and challenges with each. All allow for collaborative engagement amongst the community, council, and staff in various ways. If you'll allow me just a few minutes to walk through each of these options and highlight our citizen engagement, then I'll pause, and we can have some more in-depth discussion and likely answer some of that question that Councilmember Rao posed. So Option 1 is to reaffirm, apologize, review, or affirm all of the planned components. So those components are the mission, vision, core values, goals, objectives, outcome measures, and initiatives. At this time, you may not want to change those guiding visionary components this early. You may want to allow those a few additional years to settle in. It's an opportunity for a full plan revision if council so desires. The process could be a little more involved and a little longer due to the workload that's required in that level of review. The next plan cycle recommended would likely be five years because you would have a fully-reviewed and fully-refreshed plan. Option 2 would be to revise key components. Those would be the objectives, outcome measures, and initiatives. Those guiding components would remain unchanged. We could determine any items that needed to be expanded, removed, or added or edited. The full plan would not be revised. It provides an opportunity for streamlining. This is part of the comment that I shared in response to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's question. This would give us an opportunity to provide some of those alignments where we see able to. The next plan cycle recommended would likely be three years, and that would be an opportunity to allow us to further assess some of these originally-established components. Option 3 is council themes. So if council were agreeable, they could provide some focused topic areas or themes, and staff would revise related items and bring back for affirmation or further amendment. Likely, the full plan would not be revised under this option. Next plan cycle recommended would be three years, again, to further assess some of these originally-established components. Option 4 is to allow staff to recommend revisions. Similar to Option 1, staff would review the full plan and make recommendations for revision based on current metrics of plan performance. However, the full plan still may not be revised. And the next plan cycle recommended could be three or five years based on revisions that took place, still further assess any originally-established components. Option number 5 is a combination approach. Choose any components of previous design recommendations for the revision and determine if there are components that council maybe would like to review more regularly. One of the things that I've come across in my last several months of reviewing is some organizations review their initiatives on a more regularly recurring basis. Some organizations review other components on a more regularly recurring basis. So as I mentioned earlier, initiatives are those shorter-term, more project-oriented items. Council may determine that they want to review those every two years, regardless of the length of the plan. Council could determine if it wanted to adopt components of the plan. Some organizations do not approve or adopt their outcome measures. They allow them to live organically. They're still captured in the plan and reported on. Just provides some additional flexibility. This combination approach would give you lots of flexibility in establishing your next plan cycle because, again, it just would be based on the amount of revisions and review that would occur. In our current environment, we know that there's a lot of unknown variables and timelines that may not provide for in-person engagement in the near future. We have a variety of resources for contactless engagement available to us. We have online tools. We have social media. We have surveys. We have direct mailers. We have a strong internal resource with a full communications department at this time, and we'll certainly utilize in-person engagement as soon as it becomes available. I know I went through that pretty quickly, but I want to be able to have time for discussion here. So I'm going to pause and ask if council has questions, anything I can clarify related to some of these review options.
So Ms. Hudson, are you looking for feedback on which of these themes? Or are you going to go through some other stuff first? Like, which of these five options? Are you looking for feedback on that now?
If council has questions on these, I'm happy to provide further clarification. But if council sees a preferred approach at this time, staff would definitely take that feedback. Certainly.
Okay. I like the idea of the streamlining you discussed earlier. So I would lean towards Number 4 as staff is really the boots-on-the-ground implementing these objectives. I think you would be in a really good position to determine where it's a little off-track or not as effective as you would like. I would love the opportunity as a council to be looking at the objectives and how they're coming along every two years as part of the timing. Those are my comments right now. I'm looking forward to hearing from more of the council on that. Now, recognize Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you. Erin, just to clarify. So Option 1 was a full review of the whole plan? You said the mission, the vision, the goals?
Yes, the whole thing, start to finish.
Okay, so I would count that one out because I'm going to go back to your comment about we need to give this plan a few more years to evolve, I think, before we do that. So I would say no to Option 1. And again, to be clear, you said Option 4 was the same as Option 1, but it was just done at the staff level. Is that correct?
So very similar to Option 1, but staff would be kind of taking the reins there. I would also offer that staff would not recommend revising the guiding components. So mission, vision values, staff would not recommend altering those at this time.
Okay, that's good. I just, my only comment and thought right now is that we should not go back and restart the whole plan. I don't think we've given this enough time for it to evolve. It is still evolving, and we're still tweaking it, and I'm good with that. I'm not sure where that fits in. I don't know if that's Number 2? Or if it's the hybrid? But I actually do like 2 and 3, quite frankly. So I'm trying to figure out what the difference is between your Option 2 and 3.
So between 2 and 3, Number 2 is a review of just those objectives, outcome measures, and initiatives. Number 3 is really going to be more of those focused areas that council would identify. So if you tell us anything related to transportation, anything related to development, we are going to review everything in our plan that applies in those focus areas.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And just to revisit further, Number 4, when I recommended 4, I think of staff as reviewing it constantly. So I think that that review is always happening. So I wouldn't indicate that I'm looking for them to review everything again. Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Robati, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry. I was talking on mute there. So I think that Number 4 with the staff-recommended revisions is the way to go. But I also think that if there's going to be, that's the one where we come back to it every two years, right? Like, we go where we get another update in two years?
No, not necessarily. So if you all determined that Number 4 was the option that you most preferred, we would recommend to staff either a three- or five-year cycle. And again, that would just be based on the number of revisions that occurred. So if 90% of the plan ends up revised, we would likely recommend a five-year term for the next plan. But if it's a lot less, we would probably recommend another three-year term just to get a sooner refresh, if that makes sense.
It does. Okay. Yeah, then I think that, I mean, I think that Number 4 is fine. My goodness. I don't think I really understood the differences in the time for the re-review for all the different options. So is, for all of them, is it if there are significant changes, we review in five years? If there are minimal changes, we review closer to the three years?
Yes, ma'am. I apologize if that was not clear on the front end. Yes, you're correct.
I'm sure that was clear, Erin. It was just a lot of information coming at me all of a sudden. I think you're probably very clear.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, don't see any other comments in general. Did any council members want to give any ideas about citizen engagement? I think that we can do some really good, robust virtual engagement. That's been good in the past. So I think that when staff recommends some revisions, we'd love to give a period of time for our residents and business community to weigh in on those in some way would be my hope. Any other comments from my fellow council members on the citizen engagement portion? Recognize Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I think citizen engagement is critical. So I would agree with the mayor that we need to make sure that we... So I would agree with the mayor that we need to make sure that we do what we can to have more virtual. Maybe events periodically. After the pandemic, it seems to me that we just haven't had the time to engage with citizens about the plan. And what their changing expectations might be. So I think that that's something that I would really like. And eventually, if we can ever get back to doing it in person, obviously, that's the best. So I don't know what the plan would be to start with virtual and then work ourselves well, work ourselves to maybe a hybrid model or. You know, and also getting the different committees involved, which we probably already mentioned, but planning. And sustainability. Very important public education committee, which I feels, in my opinion, has gotten a little bit off track. So I think we got to better define what our goal of education is and then try to give them a little bit more guidance in terms of how they meet. That goal, just food for thought.
So that sounds like maybe a focus theme.
Yeah.
In there. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. And Ms. Hudson, where would that fall within our overall goals? A focus on education, in your opinion?
So right now, initiative six D is your collaboration and and work efforts with Wake County Public Schools. So if if council had some desire to have public education as a as a theme area, we could certainly incorporate that moving forward. At this point, I think I just want to make sure that I'm capturing and understanding feedback. I'm not hearing that council wants a full plan review. I believe I am hearing that council would like for staff to maybe start the review. And and lead from that perspective. Is that accurate?
That is what I'm hearing as well. I think there's probably interest in transportation and education. As focus themes, but we have a couple of comments queued up, so let's recognize those. They might be responding to your statement. First, Councilmember Rabadi followed by Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I'm concerned that virtual engagement methods like online meetings and even social media posts and such. I'm concerned that there might be a big part of the population that's getting left out of those efforts. Or is going to get left out of those efforts, you know, not everybody is computer savvy and not everybody, you know, necessarily. Understands how to join a virtual meeting or how to, you know, or even goes to the council website all the time. I mean, the, sorry, the town website all the time. So I'm wondering if maybe there was a way. Maybe we could have like an opt-in text message for meeting, for meetings where you could join the meeting on your phone. And all you would have to do is literally click the link and people could opt into that. That might be one way to do it or. You know, anyway, I think that we just have to think outside the box when we're talking about non-in-person engagement and also. On how to, how to get the word out to people that are not as tech savvy as maybe most of us are. So that is my comment about that. Thank you.
Okay, so staff will work on different methods, generally getting the theme that we do want the citizen engagement and input to happen. Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you. Um, so Erin, I wanted to echo your last statement. I think that does sum it up. I did not want to go back and reevaluate everything. So I like your statement about how staff leading us. And then we'll, we'll certainly affirm or we'll ask you to amend as we go through the process. So your statement for me captures, captures it real well. You know, and looking at the goals and when we talk about themes or key, key components to look at, I think they're all really important. So. So that leads me back to your last statement, captured, captures it real well for me. And then also what Councilmember Rabadi just said, I I wholeheartedly agree. We need to think out of the box on how we engage our citizens. I think we're doing a fabulous job with the technology that we have, but. So here's a question now, when do you see this citizen engagement happening? And is it something that can be done? You know, in the months to come, when the weather is good and and we can have something outside?
Yep, certainly. So that is actually in about two slides from here. So I appreciate that you all are are very engaged in this conversation. It's making it much easier for me. If, does anyone have additional questions or input on the revision process itself? And then we can jump into more of of that engagement conversation.
Okay, not seeing anyone raising their hand in the virtual way, so I think we're ready to move on to the next step.
Okay, thank you. So I do want to very quickly speak to what Councilmember Rabadi and Mayor Protem Johnson addressed. We have so many tools available to us for citizen engagement. And throughout the last six months of this very interesting year. I know we have all participated in a number of remote settings. And I have actually been informed of and exposed to lots of new and unique different tools. And have participated in conversations on social engagement and equity. And so I think we have a lot of resources that we probably forget we have access to. So to those folks who maybe don't have as much opportunity or as much familiarity. With some of our remote platforms, we have those direct mailers. We have those ways to reach them through maybe just an email. We have those opportunities to get to them with that somewhat direct, but still indirect contact. So we're not going to lose those. We're going to keep those as part of that engagement process. When we get to the citizen engagement process, we would love for it to be in person. We would love for as much of it as possible to be in person because we know how valuable that input was with our original plan development. We also don't know when or exactly how that will occur in the next few months. So as of right now, we would like for engagement to begin probably towards the end of November. And carry over a couple of months. It would be great because there may be an opportunity for some holiday events at that time, maybe in person. Again, we just don't know. But we are certainly going to be flexible and remain open to whatever opportunities present themselves. So that actually carries me in very easily to this slide. As we move forward, we know that this process is going to be different from our original plan. It was a very heavy in-person engagement, a lot of reliance on some pre-existing data, fewer upfront questions. We're not going to cover specific questions tonight. We'll have some of those draft questions to share with you soon. I know Councilmember Rao referenced kind of how. The the landscape has changed over the last few months and how are we going to make sure that we're engaging our citizens and how they feel about that? But we are going to use this conversation and these considerations to help us further develop those questions and as we revise our plan. So with that, I would encourage council to think long-term about the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. And its usefulness to the Morrisville community and our organization as we begin to prompt for feedback. We have to stay high level and broad. We don't need our plan to be necessarily overly detailed. Avoid limiting multiple plan components to a single department or single staff. We have to stay focused on data. We have staff doing a lot of this work right now, preparing us for moving forward into our next steps. This third bullet really sums it up for us. We have to remain agile. No one can foresee the future, but if 2020 has taught us anything, it is to be prepared for interruptions and to expect the unexpected. We have to use plain language. We have to avoid undertones and government jargon. And we need to be able to create scenarios, paint a picture, tell a story. We don't want to just ask questions. We want to have that meaningful conversation and engagement. And give folks something to respond to. I know that's going to be a little different when we're not in person and standing right across from someone. But we have a lot of tools and the ability to still get those meaningful responses using the tools that we have. These considerations really help us set the stage for formatting this revision. They're going to allow us to be consistent from our engagement to when we really incorporate our revisions. I believe Councilor Mayor Protem Scroggins Johnson asked us kind of where we were in the process. So this proposed timeline should give you kind of a very teeny tiny text of snapshot of where we are. This image is actually attached to your agenda item and larger printouts have been put in your mailboxes at Town Hall. We are currently in step three here in October with this update to Town Council. Getting your input and your feedback on how you all would like to see this revision and review process move forward. The work that is going to take place moving forward will come to you all through work sessions and your retreat over the next many, many months. Like I said, we are hopeful that we can start some of this engagement. Late November, maybe early December, really just depends on, on timing. And our goal is to have a revised plan adopted by the end of FY21. You know, 2020, again, super unique year. I think I thought that we would have been working on this in the spring and summer and. You know, lo and behold, it, everything just got flipped upside down. So we are, we are working on things with the tools that we have available and moving things forward. And we want to make sure that we give a meaningful revised plan to our staff, to our community. So that it, it really gives them what they need. I hope I have answered the questions that I had asked folks to kind of pause and hold on to. But at this time, I am happy to answer any additional questions or provide any clarification that's needed.
That's a really great summary because I think this strategic plan is already working really well. So this is an opportunity to essentially do a check-in and see where we're at. I really liked the chart which showed how many of each of the objectives have been coming through through our briefing items. It shows this is a good balance. We're working on all the different objectives that were identified. And really focusing on the ones that our residents are most interested in. Looking over in the chat box to see if anyone has any comments or questions at this time. I'll recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment back on your, or I have a question. Back on your presentation where it talks about, I'm trying to bring it up on my computer. It says Morrisville Pro being redeveloped. Can you give us a little bit more information on that?
Yeah, let me jump back there as well.
Just as far as like what, how is it being redeveloped and what the timeline is for that?
Yes, so one of the things that I mentioned that we're working on is staff is updating and bringing that information current. We just did not keep updated data in there like we had wanted to over the last year or so. So we have really been making concerted efforts over the last several weeks or month to get all of our data current and updated. And our goal again is to have that updated information published to Morrisville Pro by the 30th, so by the end of this week. We are also working on an updated design with our vendor. And seeing if we can break things out a little bit differently. Options to show capital projects as a header along with the goals and current year work items. So really just want to make it a more user-friendly, more robust tool. Seeing, seeing how we can can better serve ourselves and our community with that tool.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of a delay. No, the only comment I I will make is that, um, that was just a great summary, Erin. And I think it's really important for us as a council to make sure that we ourselves are. As we go down the year, pushing ourselves to make sure that we're achieving as a team. Of specific things that we can highlight as success under our focus areas. So on a positive note, I'll say that I think we all need to really, not really pat ourselves on the back, but give kudos in terms of like the technology area. How far we've come with the smart cities, the CIO and the staff has come with a very good plan. We we allocated budget, we've made something happen, things are moving forward. I think we've made a lot of progress in sustainability. Councilmember Fender has brought some great ideas on that. And community engagement with this great stuff that our communications department is doing. So I think that every year we should be highlighting and focusing on where we can get successes and wins under each focus area. And, um, but I think we've done a lot and hopefully we don't have much time left until the end of the year. But going into the new year, you know, figuring out how we can continue to do that. But I think everybody should be proud of, despite Erin, how much we had our hands tied behind our backs, how much we've actually achieved. So I think we have to work smarter, not harder, and that's not so much directed at staff, but just the council as well, just as a team, that should always be our goal. Thank you.
And we're going to be moving on to that on our next item when we hear from all the departments and all the successes. So we're looking forward to that very soon. Ms. Hudson, that's all the comments and questions I see. Is there anything else that you need from us from tonight's work?
No, you all have given me great conversation. You've provided the input that I really needed and would just echo Councilmember Rao's comment. You all should be really proud of of the status of the plan. I think staff has worked really hard. I think you all have worked really hard and appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you very much for your hard work and we look forward to hearing back from you about the recommendations and how we're going to move forward with citizen engagement. Okay, our next item on the agenda is roundtable. And we've already taken a poll from everyone that we're going to move right past that and we're going to go into department presentations. But first, we're going to take a 10-minute break to get those queued up and we'll take another break mid of those. So right now, my clock says 6:47, so we'll reconvene at 6:58, please. 10-minute break. Thank you. It is 6:58 PM. I'm going to bring us back into session, please. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Town Manager Paige. Just to remind us, we're have a lot of department presentations to come. Please use the chat box to ask your question and it's completion. It'll be captured. If you don't feel like, if you feel like you need to speak it, just put yourself in chat and we'll recognize you as we go along. Mayor Protem, the Town Manager and myself will try to keep us moving. I now pass it to Town Manager Paige, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We are really excited to have our department head staff here tonight to talk a little bit about their departments. I'll say it again because most of them were not on the call when we started. They've really worked hard to synthesize lots and lots of lots of work that they and their staff do. Into a very high-level overview for you to get a glimpse inside our day-to-day operations. I think each one of them could probably talk for an hour and they probably have a lot that they could say. Some of you have sent your questions in. I mentioned before, if you could keep focused on what they're presenting for you. And feed us the questions or comments that you have in any way that'll help us move this along. I mentioned that our departments have between 10 and 15 minutes. I actually have a stopwatch here. So I'm going to try to keep it moving so that the last one doesn't get shortchanged. With what they want to talk about. So if you would let the staff member make their presentation and then we'll pause at the end or when we cut them off. And we hope you enjoy hearing about all the work that we do on behalf of our citizens. We're excited about that and thank you for. do on behalf of our citizens. We're excited about that and thank you for this opportunity tonight. We're going to start with our most important asset, which is our people. And so I'm going to ask Lori Shadlock to talk a little bit about human resources. Lori?
Thank you very much. And I'm very happy to have this opportunity to share the work that we're doing in HR. So thank you for that. I am going to talk about the highlights and I've organized it sort of pre-COVID and post or ongoing COVID. So that really does sort of explain our workload the best. So some of the pre-COVID highlights, we were very busy in the early part of FY20. We had some big projects that were going on, strategic planning that you've heard about. We were aligning our performance evaluation process to the adopted strategic plan. Specifically, the values were incorporated into the performance evaluation plan. We were also very busy. I know you're aware of our Munis HR payroll project. We've been very involved in that project and that continues. We're about a year and a half into that with now HR sort of taking a more of a lead role as we get into more HR specific areas within that Munis HR payroll. We are also continuing into our third year with NCHIP. That's our North Carolina Health Insurance Pool. And it's a pool that we joined, as I mentioned, we're in year three. We went to a self insured plan from a fully insured plan. And our hope when we joined the pool was that some of those higher cost claims, we could spread across the group and the pool and that we would also see some lower renewals from our claims. And our, it is working as hoped. In year three, I can share that we are reaping the benefits of having that pool program. And we have also, when we've compared what our fully insured increases would have been to our self insured, the town has benefited with lower renewals. And we also in March, as you know, to council approved pay adjustments to retain our competitiveness with our neighboring cities and towns. And our position study formed the basis of those pay adjustments. We do an annual position study of one third of our positions and we did a full study last year that enabled us to assess the positions, most positions across the town. And that did result in some pay adjustments. We're going to continue to monitor, we'll go back to our one third plan and continue to monitor in particular our public safety that are very competitive at this time. And so we will continue to monitor those in particular as well. So we got into March and then the unexpected happened with COVID. And really that was a time for, for all of us, but and in particular HR, we really had to learn on our feet. We had to respond and in many cases create new policies, new programs. And as you know, it took everyone working together because we had employees that were and have continued to be directly on site throughout COVID. We have employees that have worked remote and we have employees everywhere in between that they're also working on a rotating schedule as well. And this has continued throughout the pandemic. And it has taken really all the departments, all the staff continuing to provide their input and feedback for us to determine how to best respond and then continue to adjust as we've needed to as we find out more about COVID, you know, how we respond and continue our workload as we move through, move through the pandemic. So we have also, we have also adapted policies and procedures. We brought some briefing items to you regarding an emergency sick leave and emergency FMLA that were direct results from the Department of Labor that were literally started in April and then more and more information came as we were able to interpret and understand and make sure that we did administer that program in a consistent way. And that effort continues. We also had to develop return to work guidelines. And again, that took input from everyone and a lot of work from our senior management team as well. And we continue to work with that and be flexible with our employees, which has been very, very important. And we continue to evaluate and learn as we go along. COVID fatigue is real. We're aware of it and we continue to monitor that. And we continue to work through our department heads to make sure we understand employee needs, talk directly to our employees and make sure we understand their needs and really trying to make sure we continue to meet our employees where they are. In each situation, there are unique needs and we want to make sure that we understand and we know one size does not fit all. And we know and understand we have our work to do and we need to do that in a way of also, you know, considering again, our most important, which is our people and making sure we're taking care of them and that they're safe and doing their jobs to the best of our abilities. We've also reworked employee events, you know, and some of the outward facing events that you've already seen go virtual. We're doing
Lori, if you can wrap it up a little bit?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay, okay. We're doing the very same thing with some of our employee events. We also have a new employee, Leilani Dashner, that you'll be meeting as well. And we'll continue on with our major projects as we go along and, you know, keep adapting as we need to. And I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Lori. I have noted question from the mayor that we will capture related to how our performance metrics compare to prior years. So we'll provide that. We have three, three or four minutes. If there's anything anybody want to ask about Lori's presentation or something she didn't get to cover? All right. Great job. Another one of our internal service departments that's been vital to enhancing our service delivery, not only internally or but externally as well, is information technology. It's been a huge focus this year. I'm going to turn it over to Rick Ralph.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, council. I appreciate the time here today to highlight a few of our department initiatives as well as our staff. You've heard from me on the various IT initiatives and I'll highlight some of those tonight, but I want to start by spotlighting the Morrisville IT team. IT is comprised of seven members and handles a variety of services. As you can see on your screen, we've got our support division with Jennifer Miller as our support analyst and Billy Whitehead as our support analyst too, handling end user support. Our newly hired network and security administrator in Kelly Kristen, who handles network management and maintenance as well as cybersecurity for the town. Rodney Watkins, our GIS manager handles our internal and external GIS services. Then we've got our systems division with Chuck Bryan as our senior systems analyst and Danny Riley as our operations manager. They handle server, storage, disaster recovery and application support. I want to bring your attention to a few of the figures on the right side of the page. The first and most impressive is the 110 plus combined years of IT experience of the seven IT staff members. It's an average of 15 years. The next number is that we support over 600 end user devices, which includes computers, mobile devices, peripherals and in car equipment. We also receive an average of 2,200 help desk tickets per year. These tickets can range from device support to end user training. That is almost eight and a half tickets per workday and our staff is excellent at balancing that support workload while managing the multiple projects at the same time. Customer service is something we take very seriously and that's why we try to keep our average response time under 60 minutes with the industry average about three hours. I do want to highlight this from other members of town staff that have graciously sent these compliments to our IT staff over the last year and a half. I've compiled some quotes and I'd like to read them briefly about our IT staff. First, they have been very responsive, thorough in their assistance with IT items and very courteous. Next, great service, many thanks. Next, thank you so much for the tremendous effort you are putting into making this launch successful. In my opinion, after seeing you both in action, the project is in very capable hands. I have been repeatedly blown away by the service delivery coming from IT. And lastly, yet again, great service from IT. It is these compliments and many more. They make me very proud of our IT staff and what they can accomplish. I'm also impressed by our grateful town staff that take the time out of their day just to notice someone's effort. This is one of the reasons why Morrisville is such a great place to work. Next, I'd like to highlight a few of the initiatives from last year and this. Our first is our highlights from FY20. Like to talk about the partnership with Waitex's work based learning program. It was a huge success. We were able to utilize our intern Shahira for a number of projects, including the annual PC replacement project where we replaced over 40 devices and the upgrade of over 100 devices from Windows 7 to Windows 10. We feel that this was mutually beneficial arrangement. We do hope to continue the partnership when we put the current pandemic behind us. We also completed the upgrade of our entire network infrastructure last year. This included two firewall replacements as well as 25 switch replacements. We might have also cleaned up cabling just a bit, if you can see on your right hand side. The last couple initiatives I'd like to highlight revolve around our smart city efforts this current year. A note, we have recently developed a draft charter for the proposed smart city steering committee. We aim to bring that briefing to council at a meeting in November. The first project this year that I'd like to look at is the Cedar Fork District Park Initiative. Just a reminder, this initiative includes the use of IoT sensors and data to optimize and automate our park management. We have entered into a contract with the vendor and look forward to starting this project shortly. The completion of the project we're looking for is around spring of 2021. The next project that I like to highlight is the Open Data Project. We've recently sent a couple demo videos to Town Council last week for you to get acquainted with the portal and the functions. We have officially released the portal to the public in a soft release today. A link to that portal has been posted on our website for citizens to use. We will have a hard launch in early November in which we will utilize the communications department to publicly announce the portal release on the different social media platforms. We will engage with the community to identify which data sets they would like to see on the portal next. This will allow us to outline a data release schedule for the future. We also hope to host a community contest for the most creative reuse of a data set that's published on the portal. Lastly, we implemented an AI based email security solution that over a seven day period detected and took action on 1,000 more, round about 7,000 more malicious emails than our previous solution over that same period. And it is important because the majority of cyber attacks, they do originate from email and it's easier to compromise a human than it is a system, which is why we, we also push training and awareness out through our security awareness program. With the expansion of external services, our customer base is growing. As Town Manager Page alluded to, includes external stakeholders. This can be challenging, but we do look forward to delivering these innovative solutions to our community. Last thing I do want to mention on the graphs on your screen, I have been impressed with the town staff's adoption and usage of technology. Town staff has always embraced technology, but even more so during COVID, we saw the adoption of tools like Teams jump from approximately 30% to 90%, which did allow staff to remain effective during COVID and delivering our core services. Challenges that other organizations experienced were not present in Morrisville due to the willingness of town staff to adapt and utilize these solutions effectively, which really is, makes me proud to be a part of this Morrisville team. And I will pause and take questions.
Thanks, Rick. A quick question from Councilmember Rabadi asking about what our new security system is as compared to the old one.
Yeah, I would ask that we can take that offline answer in the future. Try to not release too much in an open forum about our security systems if we can.
Excellent point. Councilmember Rabadi, I'll assume that you understand why he wants to do that. Again, a mayor's looking at translating challenges for the future. We'll capture that. Councilmember Rau, a quick comment from you?
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank Rick and the team for how much work that we've done. You've done so much work. I don't know, I want, might not be able to say much anymore at the meetings because of smart cities and open data, but I think it's really exciting. One question I had was when you do launch the open data portal, one question I get is from enthusiastic citizens and entrepreneurs that want to be a part of an open data initiative. So I guess I would just be curious as to, are you willing to put together, I guess that might fall under our community engagement focus area, but how we leverage technology for community engagement. The second component of my question is relating to, you know, just data and analytics. So when you have open data, I saw you talking about AI and security. Could we potentially look at, maybe our steering committee would have ideas on artificial intelligence and ways where we could start looking at data sets as a council in our different areas so we can make better predictions about, you know, you know, for example, schools, traffic patterns, right? I mean, this whole idea of, you know, an analytical kind of data brain that that could exist. I just don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, absolutely. One of our key measures is using this data to make better decisions. And one of the biggest things is inventorying all the data sets that we have here at the town to better wrap our minds around what data we actually collect and using those to make smarter decisions. So we're in the process of inventorying all of those data sets that will help us identify the release of those data sets on the open data portal and then what kind of analytics we do use. We have been engaging with some Morrisville residents that are interested in kind of helping perform some of those analytics once we get further along in releasing more and more data sets. So we have been in conversation with with some folks.
And the final question I would have, just a comment, is that one opportunity I see for us is that there's a lot of entrepreneurs in the tech area and many companies and just maybe getting involved with the steering committee, but if entrepreneurs have a unique idea and they want to give back to the town and provide, I think we should have some kind of a program because after the chamber had their innovation program, that sort of died away. We've got to rebuild it. So that's just something down the road and, you know, if they come to me, I'll just forward them to you guys and you decide. I know I've sent you a couple that have come my way, but you know, whatever you can do to facilitate that. And maybe the steering committee would address that. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We have a few more minutes if anybody else has an IT question. All right, we'll move on. So we're going to switch gears a little bit to one of our first big external facing departments and one that does a lot of the work that is sort of sight unseen unless there's a problem with it, which is our Public Works. I'd like to ask Giselle to talk about Public Works, please.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. The Public Works Department has 21 employees and we are organized in five different divisions and that includes administration, street maintenance, facility management, fleet management, and community enhancement, which is divided into crews, the athletic facilities maintenance and the grounds maintenance. The menu of services that the Public Works Department provide to our community are characterized by commitment, preparedness, preservation, safety, innovation, and sustainability. The motto that has been adopted by the team is that in this office, we are happy, we are helpful, we respect, we do teamwork, we are friends, we communicate, we have fun, we do coffee and cake pre-COVID, and most of all, we are a team. Through an inclusive and collaborative environment, we have a 95% overall staff satisfaction. Speaking of our passion, this is a very passionate crowd at work and outside of work. We have a pilot, a race car driver, a cabinet maker, a singer, a photographer, a math teacher, a ranger, a volunteer firefighter, and a shoe collector with over 130 pairs of shoes. We have coordinated more than 870 volunteer hours through the Eagle Scout programs and schools, and they have contributed by planting trees. and they have contributed by planting trees, making repairs at the teaching garden, installing mall markers at the greenway, and many other projects. Preparedness, response, and restoration is our game during the times of inclement weather to ensure the safety of our citizens and our fellow first responders. Currently, we are stocked with more than thirty-five tons of salt, which is good for about five weather events, assuming that each weather event is not greater than three days. Twelve thousand gallons of brine, which is enough to spray the town one time. And when we get done with that brine, we have the ability to mix and restore everything in our storage facility. And we have fifty cubic yards of sand that we use to mix it with the salt. To put it in perspective, we use about one-third of that last year in the winter of nineteen twenty, which was not, was kind of a mild winter, and we use all the brine that we have stored and we replenished. All the equipment is tested once a quarter, depending on the equipment that is needed for the season that we are in. I specifically highlight the winter preparedness because it's the one that's coming up. We have completed over twenty-five hundred work orders, and they range from signs to potholes, dead animals, debris, greenways, graffitis, HVAC repairs, roof leaks, car repairs, and many more. We have repaired four hundred and twelve trip and fall hazard on Perimeter Park, which restored nearly twelve thousand square feet of sidewalk using precision cutting technology to make permanent repairs. By using this technology, the town of Morrisville saved more than seventy thousand dollars as compared to the traditional replacement methods. We saved two hundred and fifty tons of waste concrete from a landfill, saved over four hundred gallons of gas, and reduced greenhouse gas emission. And we plan to continue to use this technology wherever we can find it applicable. The playground at MCP was renovated with a new surfacing. Staff designed and installed a landscaping on the roundabout in coordination with the design for the library to provide a coordinated curb appeal. Our facility staff renovated the sixteen building at MFC in just four weeks, saving the town at least two months of work and over fifty thousand dollars in construction costs. We installed redundant hot water systems for both fire stations to ensure that a reliable source of hot water is always available in the event that one were to go down. The generator at Town Hall has been replaced with a bigger generator that is able to power the entire building in the case of a power outage. A new generator has also been installed in the public safety building to provide backup power for fire admin and police, which is something that didn't exist before. Many practices and efforts have been invested to reduce the risk of COVID exposure, which include deep cleaning, touchless fixtures, signage, HVAC filters, and many more. But a separate presentation will be provided to you with all the details on it. We currently own and maintain one hundred and twelve vehicles, not including fire apparatus. Half of our fleet is for the police department, and the other half is for all other departments, including our very own Public Works. From a sustainability standpoint, since FY nineteen, we are only purchasing hybrid patrols. And we estimate that by this year, which is FY twenty-one, seventeen percent of the police fleet will be hybrid. Needless to say that it will reduce the engine idle time, increase fuel economy, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Our practice is to provide a thirty-minute response time for emergency public safety fleet service. Telematics technology, which is a GPS system with onboard diagnostic, has been installed in all of the fleet vehicles, and it allows us to identify and schedule preventive maintenance, which has been really helpful. This month, we replaced the two electric vehicle charging stations at the public safety building, which are, which get a lot of use. As we look ahead, by nature, some of the Public Works operations have the tendency of becoming reactive. Our vision for this year is to turn that around and establish proactive practices. We are currently in the process of conducting an inventory of assets in all of our facilities, which are sixteen buildings, that would allow us to forecast capital investments in our facilities. It is our goal to enhance our inventory of assets and implement preventive inspections and maintenance across the board. Some of our future projects include the installation of additional cricket pitches at the Church Street Park, installation of protection and security of the athletic fields like bollards and chains that will help us to prevent vandalism, the development of an irrigation master plan that will help us have better management of our turf, implementation of maintenance practices of tennis courts and picket board courts that are coming in the future, defining the path forward for the Pugh House, and the implementation of pavement preservation methods. We have also been working together with the IT and the development and implementation of sustainability initiatives as part of the Smart Cities Plan, including the solar pilot project, the building management system, new charging station, and the sustainability master plan, and including many others. And with that, I'll leave it here for some questions.
Thank you, Giselle. I'll just highlight again that both Rick and Giselle have talked about their people first, which is just, again, I agree, it's a great part of why people like working here in Morrisville. Any questions or comments for Giselle? Mayor, I've got yours noted for later. Thank you. Giselle, have we publicized any information about electrical vehicle charging stations yet?
Not yet. Not yet. We have just replaced the one of the public safety building. Those were there before. We just replaced them because the ones that were there were outdated, and we could see the performance was decreasing considerably. So we replaced them with new stations that provide better performance. And the two at the AMFC are the ones that are coming up, and we hope to get those installed by the spring.
Thank you. Councilmember Spraggins-Johnson, question?
Comment, actually.
Comment, thank you.
Yes, comment. I would like to say this department is one of my favorites, and it's because Public Works touches every part of the town and it affects every member of the community. So it's so important that, you know, we provide you the support that you need so that you can accomplish this long, long list of goals. And on another note, I'd just like to say that the repaving program went very well. And I live in one of the communities that you worked on this last cycle, and everybody was very happy. So we appreciated the response time by the individuals of your team because that is so important to have that open communication. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Giselle mentioned a facilities report that they have prepared, which you'll be getting in November. Giselle, touch really briefly, high level on your public safety project, the replacement of the public, not public safety, Public Works. I know you're going to be providing Council a more thorough update, but why don't you touch on that right now?
The Public Works facilities are currently under design. We have partnered with the Wake County to be able to provide a complex that provides for new Public Works facilities, but also the convenience center. A bigger convenience center, given that the one here is extremely undersized and is one of the ones that are mostly used. We are currently in the pre-design phase, and we are currently working on the conceptual plans, which we hope to have some of the concept plans completed by this winter and be able to have at least a general idea of how much it's really going to cost us. We have been making great progress. The reality is that the site is, while it may seem large, it becomes very little when you're trying to put two different facilities in it. We are trying to make the best we can to accommodate both of our programs. And I'm excited to see how well it's developing, and I'll be more excited when I can bring it to you later in the winter.
That project for me is an example of actually some of our strategic plan components. One, we are collaborating not only with Wake County, but the town of Cary will also be involved because some of the land there is actually in their jurisdiction. We're also involved with some of our federal agencies because of wetlands, et cetera. That leads to illustrating why sometimes things seem to take a tremendously long period of time and are slow pulling all of those pieces together. And that's just an example of that project, as well as knowing that the timing of that is influenced by some future development on Aviation Parkway. It's another department that, as the town continues to grow, so do the needs and resources in that department to serve those facilities. Giselle, any last words?
No, other than saying thank you for the continued support that you provide to us. We are one of the three departments that are here all the time now during COVID times, and our staff really enjoys being able to be at work. They not necessarily love the teleworking, so they really love to be at work, and they are very appreciative of all the support that they have received during this time. So thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. Closely aligned with our Public Works Department is our engineering and stormwater. This is where we call on the resources of our engineering, our PEs and our staff. So I'd like to ask Mark Spanioli to cover engineering and stormwater, please. And I believe Ben Mills is with us as well, our stormwater engineering manager.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, everyone. And just a quick plug for Giselle. She's also one of our professional engineers, even though she's in a sister department, and she assists us when we need it. So good evening, everybody. Again, it's good to see everyone tonight. I'm going to be providing a brief overview and highlight of the engineering and stormwater department. Just a quick background about myself. I started with the town back in December of 2019, so I'm just coming up on a year now. I do have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I'm a registered professional engineer here in North Carolina and in Florida. I actually held registration in New York and Alaska at one time in my career. And I've been doing municipal government for fifteen years after I did a ten-year career of private sector engineering. I did want to take a moment to emphasize our mission. Like many other departments, our mission does revolve around providing outstanding customer service for our constituents, our residents, and our internal departments. And, you know, since we're mostly technical people, I want to emphasize that we provide technical expertise along with good communication and quick responses. And we strive to do that every day. I think that's something very important to us, and that's something I drive home to our staff. Our department's broken up into three major sections totaling of eleven personnel, ten technical professionals, and one administrative support personnel. The three sections break up into our capital project section, which currently manage over fourteen million dollars in various types of buildings, parks, and street projects. And we take those projects from the early planning stages through construction closeout. Our stormwater section, and as you heard, Ben Mills is also here on the call, provides a variety of services from plan review to inspections. They also do stormwater capital project implementation and oversee our state and federal permit that governs our stormwater for the town and also provide public educational outreach to our citizens. Our development services section provide generally plan review and inspection services under the engineering division, but we also do in-house design using AutoCAD. And that's a big savings for us and helps us move some of our smaller projects along at a quicker pace. I want to mention that many of our engineering staff have worked for the town for many years and are very proud to be part of this growing community. We have a talented group of folks that really work hard every day, even through the pandemic. And I want to say that I'm really proud to be part of this team. Next page, Jeannie. So just to go over some of the highlights from last fiscal year and this fiscal year. From last year, we completed or almost completed with construction of over seven million dollars in capital construction for the town. We performed almost three hundred and fifty plan reviews and inspections for private developments through the engineering department, and we kicked off over two million in new construction projects that were awarded to contractors. For this fiscal year, we are scheduled to complete another three and a half million dollars in construction projects. We will have over eight million in ongoing construction that were awarded to contractors. And we're working on two new studies this year. One is an intersection improvement study that will help us look at vehicle and pedestrian safety and efficiency concerns at our intersections throughout Morrisville, and a stormwater master plan, which will do a flood analysis across the town and help us develop a better defined capital improvement plan for stormwater going forward. With our in-house design capabilities this year, we will have successfully developed greenway projects, sidewalk projects, bus nodes, and park irrigation projects. This, again, is a cost savings from us having to outsource this to private consulting firms. And just to talk about some of our fun facts, and I think it's important to note, we self-manage and administer our stormwater social media accounts on Twitter and Facebook. Hopefully, all of you are followers, and please take the time to like us and retweet our postings. I think it's beneficial for everyone to hear the good work that Stormwater is doing. Our Stormwater team not only provides technical expertise, but as you can see from one of our popular retweets, we also help out trapped animals in some of our drainage structures. We also have something that's kind of new in our department. We have a project wall of fame where we put up project photographs and highlight the project managers that are doing good work. Sort of on hold at this time, but we are recognizing all of our staff during our virtual staff meetings. So we have some challenges and some opportunities. The challenge for us is always providing the best service that we can for all of our customers inside and outside of the organization. As a technical person and being part of a technical team, sometimes, you know, we're not as communicative. We like to do our hard work and just make it happen. But we do have to make sure that we're being transparent and providing as much information to our customer base as we can. The challenge and an opportunity for us is making sure the public is informed on all of our construction projects and using our resources to do this. We need to make sure we have open lines of communication and put out as much information as we can to our citizens. And an opportunity, and I think this came as a question from Councilmember Fender, about our recently developed Morrisville Carpenter, I'm sorry, Morrisville Capital Project Implementation Policy. We worked really hard together with our town management and the other department heads to develop guidelines for capital project implementation here in Morrisville. And one opportunity for us is taking this around to all the staff that work on capital projects and provide in-house training to help establish those guidelines townwide. Next slide, Jeannie. So our last page generally highlights data and figures pertaining to engineering. One thing to note here, and I believe it was another question that came in in terms of the NAs. Back in 2018, 2019, our permit system did not have the ability to track engineering plan reviews of the number of them that were being handled throughout the year. So we don't have that data, and that's why we have NA for those. But obviously, we did have a number of plan reviews that went on each year. I will also comment here that our Stormwater folks are very busy doing regular SCM inspections, and we'll have more to come throughout the years as private developments continue to add SCMs or stormwater control measures as part of the development. And we're also hoping that we're going to continue to reach out and do public education and public outreach so we can continue our best management practices. And lastly, we have continued to increase our total number of capital projects. As you can see here, we went up each year from 2018, and we look forward to potentially leveling off into the twenties as we continue on in the years to come. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me, and thank you so much for the time.
Questions for Mark? Councilmember Fender?
Yes, and thank you for answering those two questions, Mark. I appreciate that. And I believe I had one more concerning the virtual building inspections that you guys are doing.
Yes, yes.
What's the percentage you're doing virtually? And are you still doing them virtually in the Phase Three restrictions?
So yes, so I apologize for not answering that. Actually, our department's doing all of our inspections in person. The inspections department, I think, is doing some inspections virtually at this time. I'm not sure if Shandy's able to answer Martha for us on that one. I don't know the percentage of that on the building inspection side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll just, I'll just make a couple comments. I think that Mark has highlighted I think that Mark has highlighted some of the areas that we're focusing on in town, which is our infrastructure. When I started here, we had no capital projects managers. We had a project coordinator in Public Works who was at the time Vinode, who is now really doing frontline capital projects, really trying to help us be ahead of problem solving and troubleshooting versus just reacting. As a small town with a small number of staff, there are many items of expertise that we don't have, a full slate of resources. That's not taking anything away from our staff. It's just that we're building our level of being able to manage those, and Mark has really been doing a great job at balancing those that we can effectively manage and the larger ones that we will use both our internal and external resources to manage. Obviously, the biggest one coming up is Morrisville Carpenter Road between Mark and Vinode. You'll see them along that corridor a lot in the next coming years, so we're eager to get that project started. Councilmember Rao, you want to ask your question?
Yeah, it was just a question. And I just was curious, Mark. We have such a very strong, diverse community here in Morrisville. Would the town ever be able to set aside a minority, kind of set aside a minority-owned business set-aside program? Or is that implemented more by the state so that cities? I just don't know. I just was curious.
So, there are some requirements in the state statutes for some of the things that we procure for our construction contracts. I don't have the specific details. I can get them for you, but we do have some state requirements for that, that we implement when they're required.
Well, I was just curious because we have such, I mean, we work with great firms, but there could be a minority-owned business that's looking for a chance and doing great work. And so, I guess, yeah, I mean, I can find out. I just didn't know there were state requirements. I just was curious. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
When we put our bids out, especially construction, there is, it's called hub guidelines to enhance and support the involvement of minority-owned businesses in projects. And there's even some certification requirements as a part of a bid review. So, when we open bids and we tell you we're verifying and checking things, that's one of the things we're checking too. They have to assert and certify what they've done to attempt to include that in their contract bid proposal. Mark, did I state all that accurately?
Right on the money.
Okay, so not only is Mark seeing that, but even our finance and purchasing are very involved in making sure we provide those opportunities.
Correct.
Any others for Mark or remembering Ben's on with Stormwater? We've got some big projects in Stormwater coming up this year, a lot of capital infrastructure that ultimately we will need to take care of in the long term, and how to manage that future large expense as part of what Ben Mills is working on. Ben, do you want to make any comments about that?
I guess not at this time, but I'm working on it right now and hopefully next year sometime, middle of next year, then we'll have a lot to bring to the table and discuss.
Great. Thank you. All right, if we're through with engineering, we're going to go to Parks and Recreation. We've got it sort of in two parts for you. We're going to start with Jerry to focus on some of the areas, and then Matt's going to cover some of our specific things with MAFC and Cedar Fork. So, Jerry, you want to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. And thank you all for the opportunity to talk with you tonight about all the activities and things we've had going on in the past year. You know, obviously, like several of the other departments have said, we function in a variety of different ways. We provide parks, greenways, and facilities for the public to use, programs for the public to take part in and have fun. We offer events for the public to enjoy, but we also work with many citizens as volunteers in many ways. And so, I'm going to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about more of the facilities and some of the events, and then Matt will follow up with, you know, more of the program and the operation side. As everyone said so far, and it's going to start to sound like a broken record, last year's impacted all of us in different ways. And while many of our programs and events were most impacted, many of our park and greenway projects were able to continue. A lot of the planning work for those had taken place in the fall and winter, and, you know, were leading to the several spring and summer projects getting executed. Some of those were slowed with coronavirus impacts, but many of those, you know, moved forward and are now complete. Several of these projects were part of our efforts to implement the recommendations of our master plan, like our outdoor fitness stations, for example, that provide options for people to improve their health and fitness, and our other types of free recreational equipment that was installed outdoors, you know, chess tables and other things, which at the time, we put all that in the budget. We had no idea just how popular outdoor activities were going to become this year. So, there were also three projects that helped to improve ADA accessibility in our parks. You know, we added concrete parking areas and sidewalks at the restrooms at Singapore District Park. We added concrete sidewalks from Morrisville Community Park Restrooms to the fitness shelter, and from the parking lot to where those new fitness stations are installed. We also added ADA-compatible playground equipment at the Indian Creek Playground. Unfortunately, that work was done just before playgrounds were closed, but we've seen plenty of people using it in the last couple of months since the playgrounds reopened. We also were able to work with several volunteers from Eagle Scout Projects to install model markers and map signage along our greenways, install pavers around many of the historical signs on our Shallow Greenway and at Shallow Park, and they installed several benches and trash cans along Shallow Greenway as well. Probably the biggest project completion that we've worked on this year was the Crabtree Creek Greenway and Railroad Underpass. And I want to make sure again to say thank you to all of you on council and everyone who has been a part of supporting that project. Our Engineering Department and capital projects folks were on top of that and helped get that work done and get that thing open, and it was, you know, we've gotten great comments and compliments from many people about that project. And like I said earlier, you know, all of this is in place as use of our public outdoor facilities has increased more than ever and have become very popular. So, this spring, you know, back to some of the other activities we do, this spring we had started planning efforts and outreach to many cultural organizations in the winter to have several activities planned pre-COVID. Unfortunately, the pandemic impacted those efforts, and over the course of a year, about a dozen planned special events and cultural activities were canceled. But just to give you an idea of some things we're working on and hope to be able to bring back next year, a holy event, art demonstrations at the Food Hub, a kite festival, arts and crafts market events, which we hope to do possibly on a quarterly basis, and of course, our music in the park and movie in the park activities among other things. We have been talking with several cultural groups in the recent weeks to also start talking about ways we can expand some things online, educational opportunities, informational opportunities online, you know, and other ways that we can continue in that effort getting ready for FY '21. In FY '21, we're also looking very forward to opening the new senior center. Work has started on that project. The demo work's getting done, and we have two other park projects in design, which we are excited to see what goes on with those in FY '21 as well. Another big project, which we've been working on for a while, and outreach to the community, our stewardship program. We hope to kick that off this fall and start getting those applications in over the winter and have a full slate of volunteers ready to help us starting in the spring. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and let him talk more about some of our programming, and then Matt and I will be available for any questions afterwards.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, everybody. A lot of the project updates and things we have from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year are ones that I've talked a lot with you a lot recently, MAFC being the biggest one and all the moving pieces that came with it, additional staff. And we're definitely seeing a lot of payoff from these additional positions. Rachel, our marketing and membership coordinator, has been an incredible add, and so we certainly appreciate council's support with that as well as the additional lifeguarding staff. So, I do want to take a minute, as a lot of these other departments have said, to thank Engineering, Inspections, Public Works, and IT for all the work they did getting us ready. They truly, they were critical to our success and continue to be, so certainly want to thank them for their work. The other major piece that we've been focusing on was the development and implementation of a comprehensive customer service program. I know we've spoken some about it at different times, but the reopening of MAFC really was kind of the catalyst to drive that process, but it is something that we are continuing to work to implement throughout the department and to make sure that that is a consistent messaging is going out and being consistently applied to all of our users regardless. We, one of the things that COVID has done, I know it's been a challenge for everyone to not to beat that horse, is that our biggest focus has shifted from serving mass amounts of people the way we have in the past to really just trying to stay connected with families, trying to create opportunities for recreation and leisure activities, whether they are comfortable coming in or whether there's something they can do from home. Some examples of those, we've talked about, you know, that you may have seen in the news and notes, we've done the Athletics To Go program in lieu of some of our fall leagues. We are looking to move that into the winter. These are more skill development clinics that still give participants and their families a chance to interact and be active without having to put them in circumstances with a lot of high-contact things, as we found that basketball is still on the CDC's list of not recommended activities. We're trying to find safe ways to do some of that. Cedar Fork has one of the big successes we've had from it has been their virtual ESL class. ESL was a very, very popular class before, but a lot of the people who participate certainly fall into that vulnerable category, but we have been able to move it to a virtual platform, a virtual platform, and we've been serving about 65 participants in it through over the four different sessions. It's been a great opportunity for us to continue to serve folks who need it. And finally, with MAFC, we have been able to open now finally all of the components of the facility, which is great. We've been able to, the program pool, spray ground, the cardio floor upstairs, the group fitness studio, racquetball, tennis, and the weight room. We've been able to open all of those pieces in a very controlled way that has worked very, very well, and we've been very excited about seeing some of those things. The staff over there put together a report just to give you a couple of numbers that came out of just our first month of being open, just to relay the impact we feel like we've had on the community. In the first month, we issued 416 memberships, which is a tremendous amount of memberships and passes that we were able to move the first time. Staff recorded just about 3,000 visits in the first month, so a lot of foot traffic through the building, which is certainly what we'd hoped for, and we're exposing a lot of people to the opportunities we have for them. And our retention through the first month, two months now, has been at about 99%, which is a big measure for us trying to retain and hold on to those users, make sure we're providing the recreation and leisure opportunity they're looking for. Oh, and at last, is our pool capacity, or the signup genius has been working really well. What we have found is that with the pool, it's been at about 94% capacity. So, it's been a tremendous amount of use, and if any of you have been in there, you've seen some of that work as well. Moving, looking towards the future, a couple of things that we are kind of working with other projects that are going on, one of them is the possibility of a disc golf course. Athletics has been in contact with Carrion Raleigh for over a temporary course, and so we have talked to Public Works. We've had some folks out there looking and trying to see where we could potentially use one that would be a very limited impact, not a very, very limited impact on workload, but still provide some of the disc golf opportunity that people might be interested with. And finally, we are looking at some updates for our after-school program. This year, we have been meeting with the school and with the changes in COVID schedules and things of that nature, the school has told us they are going to be taking on the provider of traditional after-school programming, which has given us an opportunity to look at some more class-driven program opportunities for still that provide during the after-school hours, but are providing a mix of things for participants, and we're hoping those are something that really do continue to grow as the school opens up and hopefully things do improve. But we are certainly waiting on that, and it is a big change. This is the first time in 28 years I haven't had an after-school program that I've worked with, so it's a little more precarious for me, but hopefully it'll be something that'll be really good for everybody. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Martha, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I turn it over to council for any questions, if between the two of you, could you just touch on two things either to remind council or for those that may not know? One is our relationship with Cedar Fork Elementary School and the use of the facilities versus our side versus their side and how that works? And then also touch on the role that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee plays in some of the work that you do. So, I'm going to pass that to both of you to field those.
Okay. I'll answer on the school side. We have been, we operate the Cedar Fork Community Center in a joint-use agreement with Wake County. So, way back some, 2003, the school was built. It has a gym, a full-size gymnasium and a community center built at the one end. So, we operate hours in a concert with the school in terms of their schedule, making sure they have the spaces that they need during the school day and that we have spaces that are available to us either after school, on the weekends, during summer break, and things like that. There are, I believe it was the first one in Wake County at the time. There have been a number of others that have come up since then, but, so we do have, we do work with them fairly closely, try to keep a good relationship with the school in trying to make sure, you know, we're not duplicating a lot of programming effort, that we are meeting the needs of the school, of the kids at that school. But as again with this after-school model that we're going to look to now, that we'll be able to serve kids beyond just Cedar Fork Elementary School, those would be really open to anyone in Morrisville for the first time.
And of course, council got to be at Cedar Fork just a couple of weeks ago, so they got to meet Kristy and some of the staff. So, that was real nice to use that facility. Which one of you would like to just talk about the Parks Rec Advisory Committee?
I can. Obviously, I mean, most of you, I think, know, we have a full committee, and Parks Rec Advisory Committee is a great benefit to us and great to work with, might provide a lot of great input. They're the connection we have in the community. They're a very diverse group, so they give us feedback from different members of the community and different cultures. They volunteer for activities. Many of them have volunteered to help us with some planning work that we're going to be doing over the winter for events next year. And really, you know, it's just great to be able to have a group like that who, you know, will send us an email occasionally about something they've seen or an idea they have, or, you know, they'll come to all of our meetings and bring ideas with them and want to talk with us about ways of improving, you know, our facilities and services. But advisory committees like that are a very valuable tool for us from an outreach standpoint. They help us get information out to the communities through the different H.O.A.s that they're on or where they live, and so we really enjoy working with them, so.
So, if you don't know, they handle Santa calls that'll be coming up in a couple of months, so we have a lot of Santas here in Morrisville that help us. Quick question from Councilmember Rao, might be better to address this one more comprehensively offline, which is support for cricket and cricket fields in Morrisville and how we work with TCL in particular, as well as the expanded minor league team that's using the facilities. But I'll ask Jerry to provide a more comprehensive update to that offline, if that's okay, Councilmember Rao, and it looks like he says that is fine. Any additional questions for our Parks and Rec staff? Then I'm going to suggest, Mayor, this might be a good time for a break before we come back for Part 2 of our departments.
That sounds great. We've loved hearing so far, and we're looking forward to the second half. It's now 8:00 PM. Let's go ahead and reconvene at 8:10, please, so please be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. It is now 8:10. I'd like to pass facilitation back to Town Manager Paige, Ms. Page. I'd like to pass facilitation back to Town Manager Paige, Ms. Paige.
Martha, are you talking?
I believe you pressed the mute on your headset because you aren't mute, muted within teams.
How's that?
There you go.
Yes, I've got this thing here. I'm sorry for that. I'd like to ask Michelle to talk about planning. You hear from her staff regularly at our council meetings, but there's a lot going on behind the scenes as well. So Michelle?
Okay. So, thank you, Martha. So just to review some of the stuff that the planning department is working on, as a reminder, some of the core services that the department provides are development review, transportation planning, long range planning and code enforcement. And we have a total of 12 full time employees in the department that provide those services to the town. I really cannot say enough about this group. They're extremely dedicated, hardworking, very skilled. And you may or may not know it, but a lot of them have become good friends and the friends in the office and the friends outside, outside of the office and spend a lot of time together. I will say that during COVID, keeping that kind of camaraderie up that really is special to the department has been a little bit of a challenge, but it's been great to see how the team has kind of come together and taken care of and looked out for each other. And we've done some fun things together, such as Friday night after hours trivia, just to kind of try and keep some of that camaraderie together or, or keep that going. In terms of some of the major projects and initiatives that we're working on, intergov has been a large focus of our work for the last couple of years now. And Development Services Coordinator, Amy Lindley, has played a large role in that. We went in live with a lot of the planning applications in January of this year. That allowed us to begin taking in electronic submissions and doing electronic plan review. Not just a great customer service improvement, but I know none of us could have been predict, could have predicted that COVID would hit. And without that system, we would not have been able to function as well and as effectively as we have been over the last several months. That's really been instrumental. Moving forward for at least another year, we're continuing to evaluate that system and make adjustments and enhancements, and that work's going to continue for some time. The land use plan, as you know, has also been a large focus of our efforts. That plan is now about two and a half years in the making. You recently all held a number of workshops on the draft plan and we're looking forward to adoption of a new updated land use plan early next year. We're also working on another number of code updates and working on launching a new smart shuttle program. Long range planning manager Ben Howe is leading that effort. It's an exciting initiative for the town and hoping to launch that and get that implemented early summer of 2021. In terms of some of the opportunities that the planning department sees for the town moving forward, the opening of the McCrimmon Parkway extension is obviously a huge one. That's opened about, opened up about 300 acres for development. So as planners, we get excited working with all of you in helping to create a vision for an area such as that. We do anticipate that over the next couple of years with that area opened up, that we are going to see a large influx in development applications. And we have started to see, you know, interest in that area already. With the many people we have watching the land use plan update, we've also seen a large uptick in rezoning applications. We've already surpassed prior year numbers on those and in the last few weeks have gotten a number more, a number more of those in. I know that many of you are familiar with a lot of the work we do, the site plan reviews, the subdivision reviews, the rezoning reviews. Many of those tend to be kind of more high profile and a lot of work does go into each and every one of those. But I want to hit more on some of the work that happens behind the scenes, day to day that may not be as visible. So just kind of going over some facts and figures, and these are from January 1 to September 1 of this year. We've reviewed over 1,100 building permit applications, conducted 95 inspections. Since May of this year, we've opened up 22 new code enforcement cases. And you may or may not know that we hired a new code enforcement officer in June, Anna Willis. She's already closed nine of those cases, was able to do that working with those property owners and without having to go to citations. So that's great. Also conducted 163 assessment inquiries, 28 zoning compliance letters, held a number of pre-submitting meetings. And I will say we've got five more just in, in the last couple of weeks. So definitely continued interest in development. And then over 150 plot plan reviews. And if you're not familiar with a plot plan review is, that's pretty much a site plan review that occurs of every single family home and every town home that is developed, looking at what we refer to in the planning world as the bulk standard. So the setbacks, the lot coverage, the driveway dimensions. And we do a preliminary plot plan review on each of those. And we also review the final surveys when those come in as well. We also review a number of permits outside of the building permit applications. So the planning department is responsible for reviewing and overseeing the interdepartmental review that happens for each of our special event applications. There's been an uptick in those over the last several years. And you can see that in 2019, we had 56 special event permits that were processed. Those could be small events such as a business wanting to do a promotional event with a tent in a parking lot, or it could be a larger event such as East Meets West or the annual March of Dimes run that brings in over 2,000 people to town. This year we're at 22, obviously impacted by COVID. And actually nine of those were canceled due to COVID. Sign permits are another thing that the staff reviews that you may not hear or see much about. Those numbers are down from last year as well, mostly again due to COVID. You may recall that we placed a temporary suspension on the requirement to obtain a temporary sign permit in order to try and work with our business owners during this time. And then we process home occupation permits as well as food truck permits. So that's just a, a little bit of an overview of some of the things that the department does and works on a more of a, a day to day basis. But once again, I cannot say enough about this team or this staff. And I'd probably be remiss if I didn't thank the six faces that you saw on the slide before this. You may or may not be aware, but we've been short staffed in the department for a couple of months now. We're a department of 12 and we had five out for a couple of months for various reasons. So each and every one of them really did double duty and has worked hard over the last couple of months to keep things running and, and just want to thank them for that as well. But I'm open to any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. The mayor's mentioned tree preservation. I know that's one of the U D O code updates you've got on your list that council talked about at the retreat. Would you mind sort of updating council on, on how you're approaching the, the various categories of code updates?
Yeah, so we talked about some code updates at retreat and we've kind of been chipping away at those one at a time. We did some process improvements earlier in the year to help streamline some of those development review processes. Also working on the 160D updates, working on the sign code update, which is coming due tomorrow night. But also on that list is access and circulation. And after that comes the tree preservation and open space. So we're just getting ready to start the stakeholder engagement on access and circulation and we'll be following up with tree preservation, hoping to start kicking that one off early next year.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle that they'd want to ask? Michelle compliments to you that even though you're short staffed, you've achieved many accreditations and kudos to the planning team.
Thank you.
So I'll prepare you. The sign code update is extensive tomorrow. So just forewarning. Any others? Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Also really, really related to planning and engineering, our, our third leg of the stool is our inspections department led by Shandy Paget, who keeps things humming in that area. Shandy, if you would tell us about the department and your staff? And if you could remember to answer Councilmember Fender's question about the virtual inspections, please? Shandy there?
Oh, good. Sorry, I'm talking away and was not unmuted. Sorry about that. All right. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to let us present to you. Y'all know I love an opportunity to talk about building permits. So I hope to give you some great information tonight. So our department, even though we're titled inspections, we have the responsibility for processing all of the building permit applications, conducting building plan review, issuing those permits, and then conducting the corresponding inspections so that folks can actually occupy their space. We have a staff of 10. Two of those positions are new this year. It was the inspections customer service supervisor, and we hired Emily Maddox for that, and the inspections operations manager. And Mike Lee was promoted to that position. Our staff stay extremely busy doing building permits. On average, we issue about 900 building permits a year and then conduct 10,000 inspections per year from our staff. About 20% of those are the virtual inspections that we're asked about. The other 80% we are conducting in person. The most significant highlight of this year has been the intergov. As Michelle had mentioned, with COVID not being anticipated, the fact that we went live in December truly was a blessing. When everything happened with COVID, we were already online, applications were being online, plan reviews. So it was a pretty smooth transition. It was just moving staff to a different location to do their work. When we went live in December of 2019, it gave us the first time we could actually capture the workload for the permit technicians. So the permit technicians are responsible for all the administrative aspects of the building permit applications. Just from December 15th to June 30th, the permit techs processed files 2,532 times and processed 958 applications. That is a tremendous workload. There are two permit technicians and then one permit tech supervisor. 260 of those applications, we proactively transferred to the new software from the legacy system. So we had a lot of active building permits that were still in process of the old software, and we took that opportunity to go ahead and move them over. So all of the building permits now function out of intergov. There is nothing left in the legacy software that we're working on. Building permit plan review is not just specific to our department. It touches fire, planning, engineering, town of Cary and Wake County. Just from July to September this last year, all of those departments collectively did more than 1,700 plan reviews with 581 being just the building inspectors. Intergov has given a fully transparent process, completely paperless and very public facing. Just a few fun facts about our inspectors. J. P. achieved level three in all five of the inspector trades. That is the highest level of certification you can receive. Greg got his electrical level one. And Bob, who's our newest inspector, he texted me last week while I was on vacation, and he had passed his building level one. These certifications are a huge undertaking. The state exams in building and electrical have historically low pass rates, electrical being about 17% and building being about 34%. So when we get somebody that achieves these, it's a huge celebration for our team. So we are very excited that they have made these accomplishments. And once they achieve their certifications, they have to complete six hours of continuing education per trade per year. So there's subsequent work that they have to do. And those building codes alone, just the state building codes top over 3,100 pages. That doesn't include the corresponding standards. So I am very proud of the work that these folks do and the achievements they have accomplished. And we appreciate the support that you as a council and the town have given us as well to move forward. With that, I don't want to cut over my five minutes. Questions that I can answer, because you know I will, we could talk all night about permits.
So whenever we need a cheerleader, we call on Shandy. I think that's obvious why. A compliment, Shandy, to you and your team from Councilmember Garamella, but I'm sure it's shared about that your department's work with people doing remodeling of their homes, especially in this, this time when a lot of people undertook home improvements while they were at home, that you really go above and beyond to help people get their permits and get it done in a timely manner. So kudos to you and your team. So thank you for saying that. Why don't you give a little bit of detail to people? When do people need to come get a permit for a home improvement and when don't they?
Excellent question. So if you're doing just basically, basic remodeling that does not include structural changes, you're not rewiring or changing plumbing, things like that, you can go up to $15,000 and not need a permit. But the second you want to, you know, add an outlet, that in and of itself will require a permit because we start to get into trades that may require licensing if folks are going to hire somebody rather than try to do the work themselves. I always say err on the side of caution, call us. We're happy to answer questions, walk you through what your potential project is. And we've had many situations where maybe folks have bought a home or something else and they're in a position where they have now inherited work that may have done without a permit or things like that. We send somebody out at no cost to help walk you through that. That way they can see what exactly are you working with and give you some guidance on the permit process and what we'll need to do to facilitate that. But building a deck, adding onto your home accessory structures, so sheds, anything that's over 12 feet in any one dimension would require permit, there's a fair amount of stuff that does. So we're here to help you and want to help you facilitate that process.
So you'd rather have, hear from them so that we know that they're doing things in a safe manner than hide it?
Yes, yes. That way, we don't want you to run into the pickle when it's time for you to sell your home, that your realtor has now identified that you have an unpermitted deck and you're trying to rectify it at that point. It's so much more challenging and we don't want you tearing down sheet rock and everything else. We want to help you upfront navigate the process. You'll find, I appreciate Councilmember Garamella saying this, our staff is incredibly responsive. The three permit texts, I mean, within an hour or so, they're responding to me emails. Once in a while we do miss one, but it's very unlikely. And so they're there to get you through. We understand time is money for homeowners. They want to get in, get these projects done, and we want you to be able to as well. So we're going to help you get that done.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao has a question?
Shandy, great presentation and I agree with Councilmember Garamella's point. My question is during, if, if companies are having financial problems and challenges and they're still open and someone comes and gives them an inspection and something isn't in compliance and they have to make an investment, is there any process that they need? I mean, can they reach out to you and say, we're having a problem? And then would you suggest that they shut down or not open? Or are there any kinds of, you know, is it on a case by case basis? Because I've heard from some businesses that they're really having a hard time and, or is it just being upfront and open with the department? They are having challenges.
Great question. So it sounds like what you're referring to is actually a routine fire inspection that are conducted by the fire department. So the inspections with the, the building department, ours are solely related to a building. So the inspections with the the building department, ours are solely related to a building permit. We don't have any authority to just come in on a routine basis to see how your operations are set up. Whereas fire inspections are state mandated to occur on a routine schedule, whether or not you have construction in process. So if that is the case of where they're being asked to maybe make some corrections or things like that, that have some financial impact, that'd be something that you'd want to consult with the fire marshal with, and they can walk you through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's coming up next, Councilmember Rao, our fire department. So we'll ask Chief Criddle to address that as best he can. Any additional questions for Shandy? All right, thank you, Shandy, to you and your team.
Thank you, appreciate it, everybody.
Chief Criddle, would you like to talk about the fire department for us, please?
Absolutely. Can y'all hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, I'm struggling my voice a little bit. I just followed my kids to South Carolina for a lacrosse tournament, and that usually gets me voiceless on Monday, so bear with me. But yeah, the fire department is humming along real good right now. We are, you know, struggling through COVID like everybody else. We are 17 strong during each day on our way to 21, hopefully for the build out of the Quint Concept. That allows us to operate four companies out of three stations, 24/7/365. When we are at full staff at 17, we can operate actually a fifth company. The squad out of Station 2 lights up whenever we are full, full staff. We are a full all hazards response, emergency response program. We handle, you know, fire suppression, initial response to hazardous materials calls, EMS, tech rescue of almost all kinds. But then, you know, that's kind of the flashy side of the fire department. But really, a lot of work gets done. And actually, one of our smaller divisions is our prevention staff. And we've been fortunate, councilors, you guys really supported that group a lot. It's a heavy workload that's being done out of that. And I will get to Councilmember Fender's question later. But they do code enforcement that takes the form of plan review. They do site visits on new construction, several different site visits for various things. They do routine fire inspections, which I think was the topic Shandy was just alluding to before. I agree with her, that topic from Councilmember Rayo sounds very fire inspection to me. Public education is something that has taken a hit in the COVID. We don't get out to people's houses as often. We don't go to the daycares as often. We are trying to protect them from us as much as us to them. Our, you know, our staff goes to pandemic calls frequently. Anybody we encounter in a medical situation is potentially COVID positive, so we treat it that way. We don't want to expose the public to our guys after, or you know, our guys and gals after they're potentially exposed. So we've been limiting our public encounters and public education's taken a hit. Home safety inspections is a program we offer. It's underutilized oftentimes. But I think that's part of our, you know, the the housing features locally are pretty high quality homes, new. You know, pre incident planning is something that we just started firing back up again in Phase 3. And child safety C program is one of those really touchy ones. We are, we are attempting to do what we can safely. Again, the same concern, we don't want to expose the families, the children, but we want to provide the service. So we're trying to do that on the weekends in a central location where we can have a staff. And we're actually going to bring in some extra staff on Saturdays so that they can be wearing PPE. So they actually get in the cars and not have to doft PPE to go on a fire call. The facts and figures, you know, we've been through most of those. Well, one of the neat things here is that our fire department's kind of unique in the fact that we don't run over 50% EMS calls. Most fire departments run 50, 60, 70% EMS calls. We have a lot of unique features about our district. You know, you guys hear me talk about it all the time. We are, we have a weird shape, we have a weird makeup, we have high socioeconomic factors. The age of the building stock is great. A lot of our, our citizens are educated and don't do some of those things that tend to require fire department response. So we end up with this kind of under 50% kind of EMS run, which is weird. We do monitor a lot of performance measures, which you, we made available to you in the gap report. All kinds of performance measures, and we will continue to increase the number of performance measures we monitor as we go forward. The only way we can tell if we're performing at the levels that we want to perform at is to analyze the data. We do a ton of that. So as we go forward, we're looking at the, you know, actually, we're looking at the 2020 highlights. You know, we did a multi, no, we'll go back to that last slide. I'm not quite done there yet, real quick. We did a multi-year replacement of our thermal imaging cameras, and that's going to take a while. That's going to roll. Everybody kind of needs to understand that thermal imaging cameras are one of those technologies. They're expensive, but they are very, they're very handy when you have a search to do inside of a smoky house. And that technology just improves all the time. It's like hard chasing. I'm sure you can think of a technology piece in your life that is similar. Purchasing the third Quint, we had to cancel the wet down for that. But we're happy to have that truck in line. Now we have a ladder for each of our fire stations right now. We don't have all of them in town right now. One of them's out being repaired on a major repair, but we're closer. The the complete revision, or complete revision of our promotional process was essential. It was, it was, we hadn't had company officer promotional in probably a couple full years leading into me being named the fire chief. We had to rework that, make sure that the requirements that we put on people were actually important and try to get rid of the ones that weren't. We had to try to motivate people to take all the training that they needed to be eligible for their promotions. And early last year, we held our first successful captains, lieutenants promotional process. We got those people online. We're getting ready to run another one. We will be having an assessment center on the 12th and 13th of this of November to do our next group. And I'm sure everybody remembers our ISO Class 1. It is a huge deal. It's a big deal for us. I wasn't sure the previous chiefs left any big accomplishments for, for, for my crowd to handle. But we got that one done, and I'm really happy about that. We'll go to the next slide now, please. Fun fact, you know, our fire department is one of only, at the time when we got our Class 1, we were one of only 82 agencies in the world to be accredited and Class 1. That was a big deal for us. And we are really, really proud of the CAM seamless response model. It is a tremendous response model. It makes us, it makes us a way bigger, more capable, robust fire department. We do lend quite a bit of aid, but the, but the turnaround for us is that it really, it's a force multiplier for us in a huge way. And we've exercised that recently on a couple of big calls where it's been our responsibility, but Kerry's doubled us down, and it's a, it's a really big deal. So we're very proud of that response model. Some of the upcoming highlights, we are working on our standards of cover. I have got to tell you, that's a huge undertaking. It's a, it's a, it's going to be 250 page document, I'm sure. It's going to talk about all of our performance measures. We'll get that in front of you. We want, you know, to talk about what all those look like. Our emergency response plan, you guys saw a lot of that in action. We, we had our EOC up and running for more time than anybody can imagine. We run a lot of that process. And in fact, we were preparing for that in advance. We had a lot of people that just got done taking their, their classes to, to work inside of an, of an EOC. And I think that was handy in COVID. Replacing aging equipment, and we really want to get that UTV up and running. We got a lot of trails, a lot of bike trails, a lot of greenways going up. And the way to access that is TV. We're kind of behind the ball with that. We should have that a little while ago, I think, with as much developing as we're doing through the woods.
Chief Criddle, if you could sort of wrap it up, please?
Yep. The new fire station is a big deal for us, and we are replacing ladder 22, which is an older aging truck and puts a lot of stuff on us. So I, I did have a answer for Councilmember Fender. She asked a question about our challenges, the construction activities challenge our prevention staff's ability to keep up. Really, that, that is a lot about, we did, you know, we do several different types of plan reviews, and we ended up doing over 1,000 different types of plan reviews. We do between 780 and 100, or 820 routine fire inspections every year. They have to do re inspections on all those, and then new construction inspections take a lot of time. And it's just with the staff three, that crowd stays busy. So the workload there has been busy. So that's the one question I got in advance, and I'll take the rest of them now.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella has asked a question about Santa drive by visits. Councilmember Garamella, if you'd allow me to, there's a committee that Brandon's spearheading about how to handle some of our holiday events, and let me put that in his pocket to work through all the other planning. Would that be okay?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. I also have a question for later about how we could promote self home inspections. Chief Criddle, with you not being or going into people's houses. So we can work on that as well.
Real quick, we, we put it real quick, they can do a self check. They, we, we make it so they can download from our website the self checklist, and that's self help. Because there's a lot of time, and people don't want us in their houses anyway because they're private. And we made that available early on, so people may be doing that, we just don't track it.
And we may need to promote the awareness of that more to let people know that. Councilmember Fender has a question?
Yes, I have one more question on this slide that you have up under other factors about the traffic preemption system, and it's being delayed. So can you give some more details on what that is?
Yeah, real quick, that, that program started out as it was going to be Opticon, because that's what Kerry used in their systems. And we, we thought their trucks running through our town and our trucks running through their town, we should be on the same system. So when we got dealing with that, it became evident that they were going to switch technologies. Instead of being an optical from the truck to the, to the, to the light sensor, they were going to use an In-Net based cellphone enabled technology that knows where the call is, where you're going. And we wanted to match speed and bearing with them. And doing that, they got a grant, the grant put them to where they had to do a review through DOT. As you know, DOT has been struggling, and they got caught up in that DOT mess. So that whole program, program bogged down there, and that's where we're at. It's recovering, and we're, we're working on getting it moving. But we're, we're up to the DOT and a little bit of Cary stuff. So we're behind them because we're in together with them on the same technology.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Chief Criddle? All right. Go ahead.
Rayo, from Councilmember Rayo, from your question before, that's, you're asking about the inspection. The thing about the routine fire inspections really are that those, that staff's out there looking for life safety issues. So it, our sense of urgency with how they have to address those violations depends a lot on what the violation is. So really, without more specific information, but I will tell you that the, the, the theme of our prevention division is to work with the customer. So I cannot see us shutting anybody down over something that is not legitimately a life safety hazard. So if you have something specific, we'll take that offline. But your customers should communicate with our, our fire marshal, and they will find a solution. I mean, that's my directive to them is to be, is to work with the customers.
And, and this is just another situation that I'll offer. It's better for any business to be proactive versus reactive to doing modifications, et cetera, in a business unit or building without checking some of that. It'll, it'll save them time in the long run is, is what I've learned. Okay. I don't see any additional questions for Chief Criddle, so thank you, Chief Criddle. Next, we'll turn to another chief, Patrice Andrews, Chief of Police, if she would like to share some of her accomplishments in the police department.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks, Martha. Good evening, everybody. So thank you so much for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. We have had a lot going on, to say the least, in the police department. Not only have we had to be, you know, able to adjust and, and be very fluid with COVID, but we've also had, you know, obviously, the events that have sparked a renewed push for action as it relates to social justice and reform in the criminal justice system and beyond. And so staff have been troopers through all of this. It has not been easy to be a police officer during this time. And we have had some very tough discussions internally with each other, working through some of the feelings that we were having so that they can go out and do a better job on, to the community and on the street. And so, you know, some of the, the highlights, as you know, body worn camera systems have been deployed. They were deployed in June. And this is, you know, this is really significant because with the deploying of the body worn cameras, we had to really kind of reinvent how we really took a look at the auditing of the body worn camera footage. And so that's where the Professional Responsibility Initiative has, was born. It's still in its infancy stages, but it basically reimagines how supervisors and officers look at the body worn camera footage and actually using it to train and self assessing themselves. And it, there's a whole behavioral matrix that is a part of this broader discussion. Some of you may have seen it on WRL with Captain Preddy. It's a, it's a research based initiative that he has actually come up with and spearheaded. And so we're very excited about that. So the electronic parking ticket system initiative, that's slated for a first week of November go live date. We had to get through some training. I threw a wrench in there, asking for some additional feedback. But we are very excited about the potential of this, of this, this system, and really the implications that it has for Morrisville in general as we start to look forward to, you know, the, the town center project. And we start talking more about parking and, and monitoring parking. So it's, I'm really excited about that. So FY '21, you know, our, some of our key highlights, obviously, very excited about, you know, reinstating our traffic unit. Now more than ever, you know, we've, we've highlighted the need to reinstate a traffic unit, a traffic team here. We will start, you know, with the, with the traffic services officer that will kind of kick off this, this revitalization of the unit. So as you know, in October, October the 1st, it could not have been any more evident that we need to have a unit that is solely based on traffic enforcement, traffic education. Then in a span of four hours, we wrote 161 tickets for egregious and reckless speeds along some of our major roadways in Morrisville. I was, I was, I was just shocked. And so along with this comes, you know, technology, right? Drones, so it makes it quicker. We can do reconstruct a traffic accident in, in a fraction of the time. Our smart speed trailers, being able to really monitor what day and time traffic is flowing the fastest. There's a lot of stuff that, that we have that is going to be a compliment to this team. And I'm looking forward, looking forward to it. We've been working with the railroad, which is very important, as you know. Lieutenant Hendrickson has done an outstanding job, really analyzing and being with them every step of the way at the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter and 54. Our officers, you know, we just came through National Night Out, had a great time with each one of the communities. It was a long week. I felt odd not having the following week, having to do a virtual. But our officers were able to really shine and really speak to the community that they serve in the form of doing some, some innovative presentations on 21st century policing. You know, perspectives from a new officer and perspectives from a female officer. And then also, we had an officer, we have three officers that are trainers for implicit bias. They are certified trainers through National Command College. And so we had one officer, Ronji Fernando, that was able to, to conduct just a brief just a brief training for one of our one of our communities. So it was a very fruitful event and a great way for us to pivot and rethink how National Night Out can be done because it is possible. So we have a lot of future goals. You know, our traffic demands, obviously, is infrastructure, roadways, you know, buildings grow and more people come into the area. You know, we we see a traffic demand increase. We also start to see crime rates increase. Our frequency of crime is changing. We're having crime, you know, more frequent now than we did a year ago. And that's, you know, that is, that is kind of the nature of the beast, so to speak, when you start to pour more people into the area. But there will be a need for additional staffing. And along with that, in order for us to provide efficient services, we really do need to start taking a closer look at facilities so that we can continue to grow and provide our residents in our entire community, this the the customer service that they are they're accustomed to. Obviously, we're still working through the challenges of a of a political climate and a national climate with police and community partnerships. And, you know, we we are up to task and up to that challenge. We see our officers are are, you know, thirsting for the the, you know, the pathway to be that change. Our officers, your officers, have done a tremendous job really embracing and pushing a gap back against some of those old norms of the way policing used to be done and are really seeking the reform and seeking the change that they want to to see. And so we will continue to, you know, to create opportunities and to create avenues in which we can grow our relationships. You know, we could put service first and and really stress the importance of building relationships and and looking at our culture within our police agency so that we can serve you better. I'm happy to announce that we just we just finished a week-long year one onsite with, well, not onsite, virtual assessment with Kalia. And so this is kind of one of those things that we do in between the large accreditation on sites is we do the maintenance onsite. So this is our opportunity now to really get geared up to to obtain the advanced level certification, aka the gold standard, that that you hear me talking about a lot. But my promise to you is that, you know, we will continue to 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 always find a better way to serve our community, to serve our staff internally. We will continue to, you know, be innovative in our approach and also to always reassess and reevaluate our policies to make sure that we are serving our community in the best and most fruitful way that we can. Sorry, I was talking so fast. You're muted, Martha.
Thank you for that. I'm going to ask two questions first. If you could, you mentioned some of the reasons why, but talk about your specifically recruitment challenges and the things that you're doing to address the vacancies in the department. And I mean, it was a small line item in a budget, but it's a huge initiative. If you could talk about that. And then another thing that we I think our council members often hear is is that that thirst for crime data and how people are aware of what's going on in the community and some of the things you're doing on the that place.
Yes. Okay. So thank you. So, you know, looking at recruiting and retention. So, you know, when we officers now are asking, you know, what's going to happen to policing when you start to hear defunding, we're hearing things that we've never heard before. And so any officer now starts to become a little bit nervous about, should I remain in the profession? And officers potentially joining, you know, should I join? When we start talking about, you know, qualified immunity and the and the extra hazards now of policing that quite frankly, is a reality for for these men and women that wear the uniform. And so we really do have to be very deliberate in when we bring our candidates in to interview them. And obviously, we've been doing a lot of things virtually now. But really making sure that they understand that the climate that they're seeing across the country, while it can happen anywhere, the type of support that we have from our residents in our community, it certainly is not given to us. We earn it because we work hard and we work in partnership. And so recruiting and retention are always going to be things that we look at. We want to look at developing these officers, career development, really rewarding them for great work and rewarding them for for really bettering themselves. Because as we know, in 21st century policing, you know, an educated and highly trained officer is is, you know, is is part of the key to being a very good officer for the community. And so, you know, with the with the traffic services officer, that's huge because, you know, we, like I said, this is this is an opportunity for us to start capturing data, to really have someone that's going to be dedicated to capturing data, to organize and be that conduit for pushing those initiatives out in a in a direct manner, organizing and making sure that we're being very systematic in how we approach traffic safety, traffic education, and really reaching out to our communities in an educational manner, but also, you know, coupling it when we need to with the with the enforcement. So no longer are we going to have, you know, officers running around trying to get a handle on what's going on in different intersections. But now we will have, we'll start out with one officer, and that officer will be the conduit to which everything flows through. And so the excitement that I have about potentially having more officers on one unit and really focusing efforts where we need them is huge. And so that all goes into, you know, crime and crime data. It's very important that we continue to push and challenge our our community, our entire community, to really assess the crime in their community, to to be educated on what's happening around them, and also to to pay attention to the advice that we that we give on our social media platforms and in our community forums. So Martha, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah. And Councilmember Rao's asked an insightful question. It's probably an obvious question about crime data being a data set for open data. That I'll I'll go first. That's a very nuanced question. If you remember, just a month or two ago, Chief Andrews talked about the challenges that she's still working through in the record management system from the CAM model. And in particular with crime data, we want to make sure it's accurate and and usable to the end users versus not having context, especially for crime data. I know that Chief Andrews and Rick have already talked about this at length. So I'll turn it back over to her to offer any comments she wants to make.
Yeah, it this was a this was a tremendous endeavor, importing all of this information, making sure everything, you know, all of what we were importing in was good data and it was and it was translating correct. And so, you know, we we have been, you know, promised that we're making progress. Rick and Sergeant Hanks have been doing, they're absolutely amazing, the work that they've been doing in preparation for us to actually be able to now take over this system. I do not have a solid date for you just yet. But but we are working every day tirelessly tirelessly to make sure that the information that's on Accurate is accurate, but also what's going into our reporting system and and preparation for this to go live is is done right.
Okay, so my my answer is more to come, Councilmember Rao. Other questions for Chief Andrews? All right, seeing none. We're gonna pivot to a department that links all of us together, which is our Communications and Outreach Department. Will, up, it's you're up to bat.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So good evening, council and staff as well. It's good to come before you guys this evening. I'll start by saying that I guess my motto in life and our team, our communications team motto is, no job is too big and no job is too small. And so our team, we basically attack each day with a spirit of service, and that's our top priority. Our department touches every department in the town and also a lot of residents down as well. So we're here to serve, and that's our main goal. Of course, we have a team of four. Other than myself, we have Ruell Hayden, our Public Information Officer. Ruell came in May, and he's mainly responsible for digital communications, the website, social media, and also doing some video work. He's my backup whenever needed. Most of y'all know Lynette Anderson. She's been there for a few years. I'm marketing events, I'm sorry, Marketing Special Events Coordinator. Her main task is is she's the lead person for our signature events. And she's also the liaison to Parks and Recreation. So she has a she has the ladder on her plate. She does a good job at it. And finally, last but not least, Breanna Gill, our Community Relations Liaison. She's our, I guess, our point of contact with our business community, our HOAs and neighborhoods. I just want to relay to you all that our staff is very talented, dedicated, and hardworking. I look forward to coming to work every day. So fiscal year 2020. So one of the first things I did when I arrived was to conduct a town-wide communication needs assessment. I basically sat down with every department, every department head and other staff, and got an understanding of what their goals were and also the needs and improvements from a communication standpoint. So that that was very key. And I'll just reiterate that engagement is key in everything that we do, not just with the community, but also with the internal staff. So overall approach last year was basically to come in and and use diverse strategic, I want to emphasize that word, strategic communication methods and channels to get messages out. And I want also want to pause and and just say here that we do have a plan. For instance, social media, we schedule most of our posts a week in advance. So so we know the best time to send them out, depending on what's happening the the week that's in front of us and the week that's going on that time. At the same time, I want to say that we're definitely flexible and nimble, and ability to change, you know, at a second's notice to fit something in. We have a lot of content in town of Morrisville, so we have to plan in advance to get that in. Another highlight for 2020 was our proactive, flexible, timely response to COVID-19. As you know, COVID has heavily influenced our work and our workload communication. I only did emergency communication. We were part of the E O C and also the Wake Joint Information Center, Wake Joint Information Center. We spent the last last six months basically finding new and creative ways of getting things done. And you're aware of our drive-through Smoresville event. Our team was a one-on-one was virtual this year and also this past weekend. I know that it wasn't in that fiscal year, but we did a drive-through trick-or-treat event as well. And we're we're focused on not losing engagement with our residents and our town staff at the same time. Looking ahead, 2021, we are focused on business outreach. That's a key. And not just outreach, but also support, trying to figure out what what the business community needs are and how can we help them with those needs. Just started last fiscal year, of course, with some business surveys, forms, and also an increased database that we're maintaining. So we continue that and we're doing that as well. We had several mass distribution events that you're aware of, maybe five or six, just getting the community stocked with P P that was much needed at that time. Also, this year, updating the communications plan with goals and objectives to continue to move us forward as a town. And we're going to continue to tell the town's story in various creative ways, be it digital, video, or even in person, once COVID gets behind us at some point. But all this great work is also challenges, of course. And one of those being, we have to make decisions on how much engagement on social media is appropriate and weigh that against other responsibilities that require time and attention of our staff. Another challenge I'll mention is that the Communication Department as an entity is fairly new, it's maybe two and a half years old. So we're establishing a a culture. So we're educating staff and residents on what does Communication Department handle? I like to say it's kind of a rules of engagement. Okay, so we need this done. How do I get this to our Communication Department in the right format? There's opportunities as well. We are focused daily on building relationships and customer service wise. And again, I'll say this, this is internally with our staff and department heads, as well as externally. And we're using COVID, the COVID pandemic, to create new ways of communicating and engaging. We've increased our database for businesses during COVID. And it's allowed for us to have an increased sharing mechanism of getting information out. Future goals include a need to support the increasing demands of the website and social media. The information that we're managing on both channels is so vast that I'll be honest, at times, it tends to outweigh the human resources that we have that are available. And that's because we're managing so many projects and so many other things within the town. So we're looking at that as well. And continue to use technology to aid us in what we're doing, trying to find cost effective tools to move us forward. And I'll just mention as well, implementation factors, basically trying to find out how residents like to receive information and how they want to give information to us and when and where. Our demographic, as you know, is pretty young and tech savvy, but but not everyone has an iPhone, believe it or not, in Morrisville. So we still our newsletter is still hard copy. We still deliver welcome packets. So we hadn't forgot about that demographic either. But I'll pause now for any questions or comments from council.
So I'll throw you one. I know, Will, a couple weeks ago, even, you established a new protocol for all of the departments internally to
Kind of provide.
Get ahead, get ahead of and providing you the the information you need to plan and prepare. I think I will tell you what I observed is is everybody has gotten really good about including communications in their strategy. And then perhaps we don't always let communications know they're involved in the strategy. So talk a little bit about how you're working with the departments to gather the information to put into your plan.
Exactly. So always say, you can never let us know about what's going on too soon. As soon as the thought is in your mind, your department's plan, let let communications know about it, help us serve you better. We put together a form, kind of a five Ws form, or who, what, when, where, and why, for departments to send over when they haven't having an event come up the following week. And we're meeting with them on Friday, not meeting, it's a text chat, basically. Just just another reminder for them to get information over to us so we can be out front in front of it. And again, this is for the department's good as well as ours, just to be able to tell the story in a better way, be prepared.
Yeah, I know I've I've found that very helpful myself. It's it's more us as departments being trained to to think further out than just right when we need it. And and so I found it useful for some of the things that that I've been working on. So. All right, questions for Will and his team? He has one of, he's correct, Lynette has been a town employee for several years, but we transitioned her from Parks and Rec. So she's learning new skill sets. I think Will has by far the total newest staff, along with himself being here just under a year, to reimagine our communication strategy and then to be handed COVID. So the other thing I'd like you to comment on, please, Will, and I know it's got installed a little bit, is is the communications platform that's going to be gathering information from our citizens in a little bit different way.
Yeah, the community engagement platform. It's not far from being rolled out. COVID kind of pushed it back a little bit. But it's just another way to kind of gather two-way communication. We're planning to roll it out in November. We'll put some projects there. I think the Moore's Carpenter Road Project is going to be one of the main ones that's housed there. It's we'll have some surveys there, just a different, I don't want to use the term outside the box, but a different way for folks to engage with us. We may have just ask a simple question. Tell us something good has been happening during COVID and have them put it there. But we'll also have updates for the Moore's Community Road Project and they But we'll also have updates for the Moore's River Community Road project and things of that nature there. So, be able to look up more information in the near future.
And to me, the key words that Will used there were two-way. Often, our communication is one-way, us to our citizenry or them to us. And this is a strategy to have that be more of a conversation than just information dumps either way. So, I'm looking forward to that as well. So, you got a couple compliments, Will, so don't let your head get too big for you and your team. We all call on you. Any other questions or comments for Will and his team? He and Ruell put this presentation together, so kudos for that and did it under the gun. So, probably not the best analogy, but really, really worked hard to edit and refine and make this a streamlined presentation for you with some comparability across our department. So, appreciate all the extra work there that Communications has done. All right, if there's no additional comments or questions for Will, our last but not least presentation is someone else you see pretty regularly, it's from Eric, our Town Clerk. So, Eric, I'm gonna turn it over to you to take us on home.
Thank you so much, Martha. We save the best for last, I've always wanted to say that and this time it might be true. I know the council has heard a lot of information tonight, so as the final presentation, I'm just gonna try and share some interesting facts and expand on some aspects of my role that you may not know about beyond the fact that I provide those delicious Town Council meals. The Clerk's Office is a sub-department within administration and is one of the smaller departments within the town as it consists of just two staff members, myself and Ms. Erin Hudson, who acts as my deputy clerk. I can't say enough about Erin, she's always available to talk through any of the weird ideas I may have or provide some type of direction, even when she's drowning in her own work. So, I definitely wanna say thanks to her. Part of, as part of the larger administration department, I also have to thank Martha, Jeannie, and Brandon for always being available to provide guidance and clarification when needed. Now, about my role, a huge part of my work under Mission and Core Services is my role as a custodian of all town records. This includes the archival of digital documents stored on our publicly searchable database and hard copy current and historical documents that are stored within our secure room at Town Hall. A quick interesting fact about our records, the oldest ordinance that I have found is from 1948 and it discusses street design, disorderly houses, public drunkenness, curses, cursing, I apologize, hogs within the roadway, and it provides guidance on a variety of different subjects. And I say that to say that, you know, our records are publicly accessible, so you can feel free to go search through random documents and you never know what you may come across. Moore'sville, of course, was charted in 1875, so if you do some quick math, you may ask what happened to those other 75 years worth of documents that were created prior to 1948. The truth is, we really aren't sure. There's a legend that's kinda passed down from clerk to clerk through generations that says that unfortunately, some of these documents were destroyed in a fire at a staff member's home or possibly at the Town Hall. But we aren't really sure what happened to the majority of those documents. Another part of my role as the custodian of town records includes public records management and retention, per the retention schedules provided by the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. For instance, our minutes have to be printed and bound and then delivered to the state for a physical archival to avoid instances such as the fire that destroyed previous town records. This process is currently on hold due to COVID. This role as the custodian of record also includes the processing of public records requests. These requests can range from a simple request for information regarding a specific town program, or they can be a complex request, like one we recently received that requested all 2019 fiscal transaction information, which amounted to about 5,000 pages, I believe. And it's also important to remember that when facilitating these requests, we serve both internal and external stakeholders. So, when a staff member's looking for something, the first place they often search for a document is the Town Clerk's Office. Regarding the public records requests, in 2019, we received 135 requests and in fiscal year 2020, we received 101 requests. The turnaround time between these two years has been reduced from 13 days in 2019 to five days in 2020 due to a variety of different optimization mechanisms that we implemented since late 2018. Councilmember Fender, you did pose a question regarding the reduction in turnaround times and I'm gonna circle back around to that once I finish the presentation. My department also oversees the agenda development process, which I'm sure most of you know. This process includes the two-week development timeline from initial item creation to final item review and website publication. An interesting fact about these agenda packets is that in calendar year 2019, we reviewed and delivered approximately 9,800 pages of agenda items to council. So, you guys have certainly been doing a lot of reading throughout these years. Some of the highlights and key initiatives from fiscal year 2020 include the implementation of the alternative balloting method to reduce the time during a meeting that we devote to council balloting, which we will see during tomorrow's meeting when we appoint the board and committee members. And more recently, the live streaming of archival, the live streaming and archival of all board and committee meetings due to COVID. We've also completed various updates to the town council policies, such as the review of policy during our most recent town council retreat, the addition of the Rule 19, motion to invoke Rule 19, and updated rules for proclamation that was facilitated by Ms. Hudson. Some of the key initiatives that should take place in 2021 include the mitigation of video streaming issues related to town council meetings. We hope to do that through collaboration with our vendors and the IT department. And another large initiative that we have planned for 2021 is gonna be a complete clerk process documentation and review, just to ensure that there's continuity within the clerk's role in the event that Erin or myself are unavailable, we can still publish agendas, we can still get things published to the website and things of that nature. Some of the future goals that we have within the department, the major one is gonna be to increase engagement with our citizen advisory committees and our staff liaisons, as well as we've discussed the need to create some type of unique or other method to increase board and committee recruitment, because there's often an ebb and flow to recruitment on boards and committees and the number of applicants we receive. Also plan on attending the next Clerk Certification Institute that's gonna take place in February and May of 2021, so I can get the clerk certification. And there's a couple of the courses that I'm gonna be taking throughout the year just to give me a better understanding of certain clerks' processes. In reference to Councilmember Fender's question on how we reduce the public request turnaround time, the first thing to understand is that a large majority of our public records requests are related to planning and inspection items. So, previously, when I would receive these requests, I would submit those requests directly. Give me just one second to plug in. I would submit these requests directly to Amy Lindley and then she would kind of navigate who within the town that we would then deliver the request to for it to be fulfilled. And I also have to say to Amy, she's been a tremendous help. I would give her constant emails asking her about the status of certain requests and she was often handling the public records requests while completing her own workload, which is why we saw the need to somewhat optimize the process. So, to mitigate this, we had a discussion between planning inspections to try and give me a better understanding of what these planning inspections requests entail. You know, I would get a request and I don't come from an engineering-type background, so it would look like Latin to me. So, she would explain, hey, this is what this request means, this is what this request means, and it allowed me to better understand what town staff member would be best suited to complete this request. And after I got this understanding, I was kind of able to remove her as the intermediary and I could facilitate the request directly to the staff member. Rather than sending her a request for an environmental assessment, I could send it directly to the Fire Marshal for him to complete that. And this greatly reduced the time spent that that request spent traveling through various staff members. And an added reduction came from the fact that in doing so, it allowed me to focus on other requests such as IT requests or requests from HR rather than focusing on the navigation of planning-related requests. Also, as Ms. Steegel and Ms. Paget have already mentioned, planning inspections, they recently acquired the ability to accept records requests directly through the Intergov portal on the town website. So, they are completely bypassing the public request portal and are receiving their requests directly, which is, you know, it's further reduced the time from, we don't have a lot of data because, of course, it was just implemented in July, but the request that they have received, the turnaround time is from two to three days. So, that definitely was great assistance in reducing those public records request times.
Thank you, Eric. I'll make a couple comments before I turn it over to council. One's a funny story, I had to search minutes in particular, it's been a year or so ago, but I went way back, I went into 1975, 76, and they were clearly typed on a typewriter and the minutes for a whole meeting were a page. And I know, I know a couple meetings ago, we talked about streamlining and editing our minutes to make them shorter, so I always get a chuckle out of that, that they used to be a page. So, we're working on that.
That's nice.
And then Eric commented on the agenda process and he's right. We have a meeting tomorrow, a regular meeting tomorrow, but for staff, their items that need to be submitted for the November 10th meeting are due by Friday. So, we are in, it feels like a constant and perpetual state of agenda preparation and Eric is one of the handful of people that reviews every item. So, they don't come from the departments and just get loaded in. We've got a process even of reviewing and commenting on items to make sure they're as accurate and complete when you get them. So, it's an ongoing cycle. Any questions or comments from Eric? I know many of you talk to him pretty regularly and see him regularly, but are there any questions or comments you have for Eric? All right, a compliment, a compliment from Councilmember Rabadi, so thank you for that. We like to take care of our council members. So, you did not hear from Finance tonight. Nancy, we offered Nancy a pass because the CAFER, which you're gonna hear about tomorrow, was due and she was grateful for that. So, we haven't forgotten her, she just spent her time on her highest priority. And then for Jeannie, Brandon, and I, we talk to you all the time. So, we hope that you've enjoyed this, we hope we've given you some insights. If you think of any questions or comments that you have or follow-up information, please feed those to me. We'll maybe, we'll gather what we have tonight, I've gotten some offline that we'll include for everybody, but if you have any, if you could sort of send them by Friday, we'll work on compiling a follow-up document for you to enhance your department presentations. Thank you for your time. Oh, Mayor Protem Johnson, a comment?
I do, Martha, I just have a comment. I didn't wanna comment throughout the whole presentation, I thought it would save my remarks for the end, but I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to Lori, Rick, Giselle, Mark, Jerry and Matt, Michelle, Shandy, Scott, Patrice, Will, and Eric for their excellent presentations. The format of the presentations and the reports were fabulous, they are chock-full of information that I think is very helpful and will be very helpful for council moving forward. The talent and the professionalism of our staff never ceases to amaze me. I'm incredibly proud of the service that each and every one of you give to our citizens and to council as well. And you each, I think almost each one of you, mentioned the fact that COVID has played such an important and critical part in the work that you're doing the last several months. And I can't thank you enough for your professionalism and for your service to all of us here in Moore'sville. You are setting us up to thrive into the future and that makes me very proud. I also wanna say, and I'll leave you with this, I recently heard someone quote that Moore'sville is a small town that does so many big things and I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. We're a small but mighty organization and we do big things all the time. And I wanna make sure you all know that we are incredibly proud of the work that you're doing and thank you very much.
And thank you for that. I am very proud of this team and how we work together and support each other and you as well as our citizens and that makes even the tough work worth it. So, thank you for saying that. Anybody else wanna compliment us?
I think Mayor Protem said it perfectly on all of our behalf.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Rabadi.
No, I agree, Liz said it perfectly and you guys work so hard and you do such an amazing job. And I think that when I've been on council like three years and 364 days, I'll understand everything you do and how much work it takes and how, just how great you are at it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We enjoy it. So, Mayor, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Martha, are you going to give them off tomorrow?
No.
For all their hard work?
We have a meeting tomorrow. So, that's a good segue. Thank you very much to entire staff and all the teams who put this together for tonight. Great job and we're looking forward to another very productive year. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I will recognize Councilmember Rabadi.
I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Councilmember Rabadi, do I have a second? And I'll recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I will second that.
Okay, if Town Clerk Smith can please do a roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramello?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passed unanimously.
Okay, it is 9:28, we are adjourned. We will see everyone online again tomorrow at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.